So we can hear you good and loud.
I don't talk right now.
Welcome back. So they approved, this is the collection results. They've both signed up. I've just been waiting on you to get back to Sandra.
Well, I don't think you're right. No, I'm pretty sure.
Just the appearance, I guess, of, you know, hanging in my head. Anyway, they were in a very tough position last night and they, maybe like, they argued and they, not intensely. I think it's a green, he ended up watching the green, she had him on the air.
Here we go.
Okay, so that one we can turn off if we need to.
But we are having executive sessions.
Yes, it's a, it's a.
So you've got to be.
We have a key.
George Preamy.
For Shane's old office. There you have it, old key.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
All right, Vicky will come to over. Please join me in the flag salute. Uh, what's the reason?
United States of America. And to the republic from which we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We shortchanged the desk here.
Yeah, we were just talking about that. Where we're going to sit people.
Get Eric on the line.
He's here.
Oh, you're back. All right. Hello, Eric.
Do I have a mic that I need or not?
Uh, there's.
That mic is on. It looks like.
Mic is right there.
Okay.
Is it, is it, is it lit up?
It is, the green light's on.
The green light is on, all right.
And it looks like when you talk, there's a.
Bar.
Okay. Good deal. Uh, got a few things here this morning.
It looks like it's, it's not very good.
And this one, Kendall, you might listen up on this one. It's the K camp that you sent out on a grant, um, that they sent to us. And one of the deals was for, uh, tarps, for trucks that haul gravel, sand, or material. We have a, a truck that we need to.
So that's a $2,000 grant?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. $2,000 grant. Do we know if any other departments or can our department go ahead and apply for this or?
Absolutely.
Well, yeah, check with Kendall, make sure someone else hasn't, hasn't applied for it.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, kick it.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that everyone was, we will see what we can do on that.
What does a tarp set you back?
Uh, it's probably gonna, we actually are doing repairs, so I can't tell you exact cost of what it's gonna be, but I think it'll be less than.
Are those the ones that roll out?
That roll, roll out on the back, the gravel from.
Fairly, and do they self-retract or?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So have that, give you a heads up. Uh, got notification that we have 17 bridges that are due for inspect. Uh, Schwab Eaton visited with them this morning. Uh, Dave, I forgot his last name. Anyhow, he's gonna be.
Dave Beach.
There it is. And he's gonna send us a proposal, so as soon as I get his proposal, then I'll be bringing it to you and see if we want to proceed or what we want to do on that. But we have 17 of them that are due in January.
Okay.
And that, um.
Were we ever able to get, uh, check that bridge up north on Old 69?
We have not checked the bridge up north on Old 69 yet, no.
So what, one of the things we were gonna do with that, with the, with the milling machine, the idea was to take off the asphalt overlay?
Right.
So that they could, like, ring it or sound it or do a.
Right.
Deck integrity test, which is included because of the override.
And we're hopeful that, once we do that, that, uh, extend the life of the bridge.
Okay. I, I, yeah.
So that might be a.
I want to visit with Dave on that and see exactly.
A project, yes.
Yes, see his recommendations and depth and everything like that and.
So I, I think what you, I think what he's gonna tell you is you, you, you remove the asphalt overlay down to the, the larynx surface or the concrete surface.
Concrete surface, okay.
And, and then basically they could drag a chain across it and.
Okay.
Listen for hollow ringing sounds.
Okay. Perfect. Um, just back to the south of Soldier on the old highway. We have guard rail that's.
Yes.
That's been damaged.
For about a year now.
Right. Um.
Barricades are.
The barricades are there. I followed up with the sheriff's department. It was a hit and run, so we have no insurance or what have you. You can call back on that. But I do have a contractor that's coming over to give us an estimate on what it might cost to, because there was significant damage, um, with that accident, so.
Does your forces install guard rails at all?
Some of them they might, but this actually ripped the concrete away and when it hit, so we're, it's gonna be an in-depth. This one may be a little bit more than what we're experienced at doing.
Okay.
But I want to get their quote and then we'll look and see what we can, where we're at on it and try and get that fixed and taken care of. Um, federal fund exchange, anybody familiar with that? On the blasting? Okay. Then I need to, at some point, we got our blast bill for Shepherd's query.
So there was X amount of money that is given to, to Roden Bridge from the feds on that federal program. And they've just kinda taken that money and used it for the blasting when it's gone, it's gone.
Okay. Do we know, have any idea what's left in that fund?
We'll probably find it. It's gotta be a line item somewhere.
So there is a person, uh, south, is it Frank? There, there's a contact person who basically is the administrator. Federal funds go to the state and then.
Then they come back.
I can't think of his name right now.
Okay, okay.
I can look through my email and figure it out, but.
If, if you can help me with that.
Basically, they will tell you how much, like, uh, like if you go to the KAC.
Let me, let me look in the, I'll talk to Patty, cause there'll be a, a line item there to find out where we're at.
I, I believe there's some paperwork somewhere that we fill out and send, send in, but I, I don't have that at the shop, so.
So, and the other part of that is, is that, that contribution has been going down here with you.
Okay. Okay.
But it's roughly $100,000.
Okay.
Uh, that is distributed to the county. The state does keep some.
Administrator.
Administrator, whether it's 20% or 15%, those sometimes change it.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, we can help you figure that out.
All right, cause the, the blast bill was 32, 343, 60.
Yeah, you do, you do four of them a year.
So, okay. All right. If you can help me find the paperwork that we need to send off.
Well, there.
We'll get that sent off. And then.
And really, it's a, yeah, it's a, it's a reimbursement program, almost as simple as turning in your receipt.
Okay. Awesome. Okay. Um, and then Lynn, this one here was in your area yesterday. Um, 45th and Unique, the road has been closed. Um, I, I look for the, one of the property owners to be coming forward, asking maybe to open the road back up because they're kind of land law. I don't know that for a fact, but I'm just giving you a heads up on that, um, that I didn't meet with them yesterday and, uh, spent about an hour with Shane and Laura.
They'll take, they'll take all the adjacent lenders on there to, to put in a petition.
Okay. But I just want to let you know that they may be.
Good.
And have we, is this the same location where a hunter was, had a flat tire and had difficulty in accessing?
No.
And I don't know.
No.
Not familiar with that, so.
That'd be 45th and 65 Highway going north on 45th, I do believe.
Okay. And then this one here is something that before COVID struck, I'm gonna pass this one to you, because this was Phoenix Colored Down.
Yes.
They were petitioning to, um.
Close out the.
Yes.
Close out the, their, their mining operation there.
Right, right.
And one of the things that I remember on that was, was that they were supposed to put that road back.
And they did. They put anywhere from four to six inches of gravel on it. Um, it's been spread out from anywhere from 15 to 17 foot wide down there. Uh, appears to be ditches. Um, I don't have any pictures on before, but it's way better than the half that goes on to the.
Going north.
On south. On south. So in my mind, from looking at what goes south, it meets or exceeds.
And so you would recommend a release?
Yes.
Go ahead and sign this release. I'll read this. Uh, and it's asking for us to sign it. Phoenix Coal Company has reconstructed a portion of County 260th Street under, from SBS, SN, stands for Burden County Surface Mine, 1401 through 1403, located in the legal section down there where this road is. The road reconstruction meets the design and specification of the road closure agreement dated August 22nd, 2003, and the amended road closure agreement dated April 14th, 2006, between Phoenix Coal Company and the Board of Commissioners, Burden County, Kansas. The reconstructed, uh, County 260th Street was reviewed by Jeff Fisher, Burden County Public Works, on October 16th, 2020, and found to be acceptable. Therefore, the Burden County Board, the County Commissioners, release Phoenix Coal Company from any further liability on this matter. Has this been reviewed by Justin Me?
I don't.
And it might be more appropriate for you, for them to put your name there and start mine, but.
Okay. Maybe look that over, not positive, so. Yeah, because this, I've seen this. When you're out for a month, things get a little blurry, so.
Well, welcome back.
Okay. So I, do you need to make a motion on that?
No, we need to make a motion to sign it.
Pardon?
We need to make a motion to sign it.
So I make a motion that we, uh, sign the release as requested by Phoenix Coal Company, uh, indicating that the restoration of the 260th, or the portion where they mined underneath it, is meets the contractual requirements.
Play here a second. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. All opposed? Question carries.
Uh, just a couple housekeeping things, just so you know where we're at. Exhaust manifold on the, uh, dozer has cracked, so we're in the process of, and when I say cracked, it's cracked all the way around. We're in the process of trying to get it off and, and we're gonna see if we can find someone local first to weld it, if at all possible, instead of.
So that's cast iron?
Yes. We have a lead on an individual that.
Does that kinda work?
That does that kinda work for locals, so. Um, cross training, we did a little cross training, uh, last Wednesday. Day four holiday, it was raining, there was a little short staff, but went ahead and, uh, took an individual down to one of the rock quarries and let them work on the road grader. So after that time, I feel that we could actually, we needed to turn that individual loose on the grader and, uh, spent the day and actually bladed the road, a quarter mile or what have you that goes through there. And the reports I got back, they've done an outstanding job, so. Just kinda let you know, we're doing cross training out there and we'll probably be doing more of it. Had a couple other employees step up that wanna learn how to operate some equipment, so we'll be doing that.
You know, there's a very good text, uh, gravel road maintenance manual. I'm not sure we might even have a copy or two in the back here.
Okay.
I probably have, but that would be actually a good reference point for.
Okay.
Road grader operators. You know, it describes, you know, even basic things like articulation and, uh, best practices and, you know, that documentation is what we, uh, the idea of traffic counts. When, when is there enough traffic volume that warrants hard surfacing a road that has what we have the magic number 400 from which we're discussed about? You know, so it's a very good technical publication.
Okay.
But, but written with a, you know, the field post.
Okay, and you think that's somewhere?
I, I could, I can look.
Okay.
I know I, uh, four years ago, I got 10 copies.
Okay.
Had them distributed.
Yeah.
But anybody that's aspiring to be a road grader operator, it.
Okay.
It basically sets the standard of, uh, best practice.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, it talks about washboards and how to eliminate washboards, these kinds of things, so. If, if we ever went to a performance management, you know, there's criteria you can measure and is it conforming to specifications?
Okay.
So that's kinda lays out what the specifications are for, uh, gravel road maintenance.
Okay. All right. Um, and speaking of the exhaust manifold, I want to go back to that. I, I do want to publicly thank City of Fort Scott, Public Works Department. We were down a couple mechanics, COVID-related type situations. Um, and they stepped up and was able to come out and help us diagnose what the problem was, so greatly appreciate that. And also, we had a situation where up on range, uh, east, I think, 235th is what it was. We have, uh, three culverts, I believe it is, go across the road that the beavers continue to build their dams on. Um, this is a, a battle, but.
It's not a annoying problem.
We will win this battle eventually, but City of Fort Scott brought their flusher truck up and helped us blow open the culvert pipe, so greatly appreciate them doing that. I just wonder, but you know that.
So how did that operation work out? You say a flusher truck, I'm thinking vacuum truck, is it the same thing?
The vac, the vac truck, the sewer truck that you see clean sewer, sewer mains.
So did they put vacuum on one side and pressure on the other?
What they done is they just ran the hose, the high-pressure hose, which blows water back, so we went on the downstream side.
And blasted it?
They ran their hose up there and it was blowing the dirt and mud, what have you, out. We got to a point where we come up through, made it to the other side, and then we took the back hoe and dug the mud and, uh, but the beavers had it filled back in two days later, so.
Do that. Busy beavers.
But we, yes. We, we, we are working to solve that problem.
So I know we have a number of drainage structures that, like you say, are no longer effective.
Right.
That are full of gravel.
Right.
And, and, you know, I talked to a fellow on the Missouri side that was working a FEMA grant.
Okay.
Basically, he was saying he had, I don't know if he built this device, but basically something that can be pushed in and then it flares out upon withdrawal, sort of, sort of like a steener, a soil anchor, if you know what those are all about.
Okay.
But it's been his, so he's like a township.
Okay.
Uh, road maintenance person. He says typically those plugs, like gravel plugs and stuff like that, are only in about three or four, five feet. And so the, the stinger that he had fabricated is effective at pulling out, uh, maybe 90% of the plugs.
Okay.
That have been caused by, you know, washing gravel down your ground and it's plugged up.
All right.
So we've had this discussion many times.
Okay.
And, and you can go through a lot of culverts in this county.
Right.
And you'll see that they're plugged.
Right.
And one of the reasons they're plugged is because we don't have ditches.
Right.
Right? So, you know, it'd be a good place to start. And, you know, next year, um, we presented for a bridge group.
Okay.
Maybe as far as that bridge group can be migrated into, to do a ditch along with it in those bridges.
Okay. One thing that I want to make sure that I bring forward that may help us in the long run and may save us money in the long run by not having to replace culverts, is if we have some sort of a, whether it's a trailer mount, a used unit of some sort with a high-pressure hose, where we can actually go out and blow these.
Sure.
Culvert pipes open and then not have to dig them up and replace them.
And we've, and we've had a discussion a few times too. And I think it's a, it's probably time to really look and see what we can do.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. And see whether.
And so that rig, to me, looks like a, a 20-foot flatbed trailer with a.
They actually make a trailer that you actually hook onto.
And even a, uh, one of these mini back hoses. Basically, you just pull up there, things there, you just swing out and you got the reeds underneath there. You kind of poke it, probe it, and pull, pull stuff out, put a hose on that.
It's actually a high-pressure hose and it runs up to, I want to say, 2,000 PSI. I'm not exactly sure on the PSI. It's what they use to clean, like, the sewer veins with. Um, you can get the different sized heads to put.
Oh.
But that is definitely, and if you had the vacuum unit, then you could also vacuum the mud and stuff out around, because sometimes you're right. It washes the dirt and stuff down the ditch and it clogs at the end. And if you had a way, then you don't have to bring the backhoe out, do your one call. You can actually just go out, vacuum.
Be cheaper and replace the culvert.
And be way cheaper than replacing.
So I've got an issue that we need to go into executive session for about seven minutes.
Okay.
Uh, it's gonna be attorney-client privilege, um, consultation with an attorney for a body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in an attorney-client relationship. Seven minutes.
Okay, you need me in on that?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I need, I need three commissioners, you and Justin.
I need you convene back.
We'll convene back here as soon as we get this done. I'll, we'll say one will convene. So somebody give me a motion.
I'm going to go into executive session, uh, for the reason you specified, for seven minutes. And just as a point of reference, uh, we are going to have our executive sessions from this point forward in Shane's old office in the courthouse proper.
Okay.
Correct.
And then we'll return back.
Turn back here. I'll give you time here in just a minute. Play here a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We reconvene back in this room at, how many get there? Eight twenty-nine. Or twenty, twenty-eight. What's that?
Nine twenty-nine?
Nine twenty-nine. Well, I'm just wishing.
Yeah, you're on Rocky Mountain time.
I am. Uh, Kevin, Larry's gonna go in back again.
Gentlemen and gentlemen, I'll take the, uh, the, the, the.
It doesn't fit on my, my.
Okay. So thank you.
Okay, good.
I'm, I'm, yeah, hi, Bart.
Appreciate you, sir.
Hello, ma'am. How are you today?
I'm just fine, I was, what?
Uh, I need to turn around and then my steps are meeting after that. Especially if you're trying to do it, and so I was sort of stepping up and asking, so, so good questions.
Uh, Jeffrey Clark, uh, I commended him for asking you a little bit of questions.
Yeah.
And hoping the rest of us to be more inspired to ask the state programs.
Yes, yes, and that was awesome, that was, I, I, I appreciate that. Of course, the, the conversation, it just brings back all legs are mine, you know? Because it's the same, because this tower is the same, same types of questions and it's, no matter what side you're on or whatever, who is presenting, you know, if you like, the same questions or someone with the same answers, those don't feel like answers.
Right. Well, what was new to me, I thought, kind of all centered on kind of the, the information on the grado and that, that holy and sacred ground and.
I see they can tell me that we have that in our town.
Yes, it was, it was, um, startled, but, uh, it used to be a place to honor those big ones.
Yes.
That, uh.
Well, now Bill told you, don't look Wednesday, too. It was more important.
I believe in, uh, conception of death.
Yes.
It could be a higher possibility.
Well, sir, I'm just gonna find out how some people aren't wearing a mask when they're mad at you.
Uh, well, I would agree with you, I don't know why they're not wearing it, they supposed to, they need to, they should. However, there is, um, little of any law enforcement ability to find or cite you. Actually, there's none.
Burnfield got a hundred dollar fine, the city done it.
Yes.
If I get four steps, you put a twenty-five dollar fine on it and then stop some of this stuff.
Well, that would be a conversation for the city commissioners, uh, the city lawyer and the police chief to address at a city meeting, which is today, I believe at three o'clock, is the city commissioner. Uh, and I, I think you are absolutely correct, uh, it, it should be a municipal citation, but I think the first time this should be a law. That, that's my opinion, just like, you know, oftentimes a police officer may pull over somebody and you're.
And I understand that.
Yeah. But, but without any enforcement, it's, it's, it's not easy.
Yeah, my brother, they, they got it through the end of the year and it's about eight hundred bucks a month.
I know, I, I, that's pretty stiff, but, but I mean, there, there needs to be some enforcement behind it and that's, that's my opinion and that's.
The reason, I'm reading, thinking about it, because I went to the police department, I went to the health department, now I'm here. And I got bad lung, and I got cancer, you know, I'm right in the middle of all of it. But I stay away from everybody and, but you know, I tried to protect them, but it didn't show up. That's where I'm from.
And, and you're probably over thirty-nine, so you're probably a little worried it's, uh, it's, uh, kind of scary.
Yeah, almost.
Yeah. Times two? It, 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 it's, uh, it's common sense, it's, uh.
We should, all of our neighbors enough to be able to wear a mask.
Yeah, you, you know, it's, it's a small imposition.
It's not only for you.
Yeah, I mean, I wear mine for everybody else.
Alright, it's not for me.
First you can start wearing a mask if you need to.
Yeah, it is weird, we, we mark, you know.
It's appropriate for that.
Yeah, I just, I like going in there.
Yes, yeah, 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 yeah. You know, um, but, but if you remember back, for how many years did people refuse to wear seatbelts? You know, and seatbelts say why, it's like, uh, I, I used to be a motorcyclist and I think you're actually in the industry to ride a motorcycle without a helmet. And having gone down on a motorcycle during one, and having had accidents, I don't think can save your life. And it's really a small, that if you consider the imposition, which, you know, I don't understand how people can ride on freeway or interstates, no helmet, no glasses, no gloves, no long sleeve shirt? No shoes?
I used to, I used to drive back and forth to Kansas City, working all the time, all retired. So it would be five or six guys who rode crosshoppers.
Oh, yeah.
And they'd come out of Kansas City every day. Oh, they'd burn up like this and anyhow get you up on the back tire. And they'd pass people and everything else, work, and come back in, change the hip on the back tire.
A lot of the telejumps there, huh?
Yeah, and I see you would almost be down in eighty miles an hour on the back tire one day. Lynn thought he was done this time. And he didn't have anything on him.
There's those famous lines, you know, there's, you can't pick stupid.
Well, I guess I get out of here.
Good luck to you. Uh, so you spoke to the police chief?
I talked to one of the police officers, and they said, they said, well, we don't know anything about it. That's been like three days after, four days after that.
Well, that, that's, that's correct, so, so remember, if you want to get something known, you have to go to the head person.
Uh, sometimes that works when they're young.
Well, okay, but, but the police officer has no authority to act the law.
There's one set, one set that can entertain a problem, say, two years ago when they had it.
Yeah. Will he come back during the meeting?
They don't do that, they don't either.
Well, I, I, yeah, but the switchy wheel gets the one, so I understand your feelings on it, but, uh, you know, I, uh, I'm, I'm, I, I owe you that, uh, that, uh, that you are.
They can take care of that, they can come up to her, she can go up to somebody else.
Oh, sure, but yeah, that, that's, that's, that's the ultimate, uh, the answer.
Nice to meet you, my friend. Like I said, I don't want to hold it all in here. Thanks a lot.
Yeah, I know, I know my room's not the only one there.
In Crawford County, they were, uh, fined five hundred dollars. Look, I have to, not that camp, and how they did it, they got the message, which is, they found a nuisance law in the fire department, went out, went through the, uh, taken. Uh, they're, but they'll give you a warning for supporting issues up there, and then business or individuals, you're not to worry. I see that newspaper.
I think it's good that they've done that, I just, you need to disagree with the dollar. But that's, that's, again, everybody's entitled to their opinions, but not, not their own facts.
Okay, we're back in session. No action. Okay. Real quickly on my end of the word.
Motion to go back into session? By some move?
So hang on.
Go back into open session.
Hang on just a second. Hey, oh, go back and say yes. I said we were back in session. On favor. So real quick, uh, road we talked about there on Ninety-Fifth South of Soldier Road?
Yes.
It's added again, it's, it's a mess. And y'all did a great job of breaking it though, but there was clay in there from where they, they trashed alongside. And every time it's getting wet, it's tearing that stretch of road up for like two months.
And we will do the absolute best we can, but the, the way that the fiber optic line was installed out in the road and the spoils that were left behind, um, that were not hauled off, that got mixed in with the gravel, this is going to be an ongoing absolute mess.
Yeah, well, I know, Soldier Road and Seventy-Fifth, they all have the same problem.
It is a mess.
So there's fiber optic in under a road, right?
They're allowed to go.
Well, it's one right on the side.
Nah, some of it's at three foot out in the road.
Okay.
There's places that it's at least three foot, not, not very often, but there's these places.
So I really think we need to revisit our policy that we have on the right of way. Because we're, we're, we're having a lot more of these installations. And it might even make sense for us to have a fee or a, a bond so that when somebody cuts open the asphalt and puts a, a line underneath that asphalt road, that if they don't come back to fix it, or, you know, a year from now it's still settling, we have enough leverage to do that with the county forces, because, you know, that's what I see in around the city and around, even in the county. You know, given the option, the, the contractor that is gonna, they're not gonna, uh, bore it unless there's some financial incentive for them, like they have to put up the surety bond if, if they're going to.
I think you have this in place already, I think it's on.
I think it's there.
On our website, we're gonna have to, or I am gonna have to, or our department.
Yes.
Is gonna have to hold them accountable.
So the other part of it, you know, normally is that, that the, the only places where we're getting cut through anymore is probably the water, the majority is our water districts. The, the cable companies and places like that are doing a lot of pushing on the road.
A, a lot of it, yes, but there's some areas, you know, that you have your rock that they're, they're cutting. But we have a lot of work going on right now by the fiber optic, which is a great thing for our, absolutely great thing for our community. We just need to work together and they have worked very well, um, with me. And kind of know where we're, where I stand, how I want things cleaned back up, so. Um, anyhow, we're making progress on it, but that area up there, it, it's gonna take us a while to get it back.
I agree.
And I'm gonna have to pull another grader to go to that area in order to work on it, because I just got notified before I came in here that that grader broke down a while ago, I'm not sure of the extent. They said there was pieces in the road, so I'm not sure what happened.
No, that's not, that's not what I wanted.
I know, so anyhow, just letting you know on that.
Okay, appreciate it.
Anyhow, anything else for me?
No. Want to hear anybody else?
Alright.
Okay, thanks.
You bet.
Okay, I'll cut the head on Monica.
The signee to that, you want that left here to sign, or how does that work?
Justin, we signs.
Yeah, I can sign.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll tender it to the clerk. Okay?
Oh, that's okay, I know, I don't need.
You betcha.
Here you go, I did.
Senator, can I have a quick conversation real quick?
Sure. Make sure you did stitch it.
So if somebody is doing that cast, you might ask them what kind of provisions they have to insulate, basically their. Temperature.
Okay, alright.
Those who can do, those who can.
I don't know.
Do that for right. Wait, uh, what's you, uh?
That's what I'm saying.
That's all I want.
Just as importantly, you know your real.
Practice in your lane.
Yeah. Never be too proud to say, hey, 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 hey. Otherwise, you might be there next week.
It's a sin, isn't it? It is. Get my glasses on.
Hi, this is Monica.
Hello, Monica, Lynn, Lynn O'Hare, you're live in the commission meeting?
Hello, commissioners.
How are you?
Hello.
Doing great, thanks for letting me call in today.
So Monica sent me an email last night discussing spark grant, and there's gonna be a little money left over, um.
And is that the, uh, just under twelve thousand?
Yeah, eleven thousand, maybe a hundred and some odd dollars. Uh, suggestion was that, uh, the public health is needing resources for contact tracing and some other things. And, uh, might be a great opportunity to, to fund that organization. Uh, to cover the PPE and the contact tracing. And they're actually have to buy laptops for people to work at home on and stuff, so, so that's one of the areas that I think that we might want to address.
Well, I think, uh, following our last meeting, where we had testimony from the Fort Scott School District requesting two things, one of them was enforcement of masks, and that's a different topic, but the other was contact tracer, and that intersects with our public health department. Well, the public health department board met Tuesday evening and basically the, the, the board agreed, consented unanimously to, to hire two contact tracers to, to, uh, let's just say, I don't want to necessarily say satisfy the school's request, but in response to the school's request and, and, and the, the great need that is out there. Uh, one of the individuals was, uh, maybe on the athletics, uh, staff of Fort Scott Community College that has helped them navigate through their, uh, internal contact tracing. And another one was somebody else who also had been, let's just say, volunteering. Uh, so, so two, two people were offered, uh, positions to support the contact, local contact tracing efforts.
Here's the thing that did this point in, I had a real quick conversation with Rebecca Johnson, uh, so she could have, uh, heads up, um, with some of the people she needed to talk to and, and her accountant, uh, was making sure that, that we could do this. And, uh, she informed me that she, that she's comfortable with it, and we'll be passing it by the board.
So then the other, the other, uh, in Monica's summary, there was a, uh, what is it? The Tri Valley had a request for something that enhanced communication of about six.
Fifty-nine hundred.
Thousand. Um, and then the other thing that I had thought about, uh, you know, Shane has this project that's going to enhance, uh, broadband, uh, as a, as a possible utilization of this spark funding, but I, I, I do.
We have to be careful on that part.
Yeah.
For, and, and Monica and I had this discussion and, and a discussion on the, the Tri Valley was that she was having a difficult time, um, uh, getting a nail down on whether or not the expenses would qualify or be able to pass an audit, was one of the other things. So Monica, you got any input on that?
So, um, I didn't quite hear the last part of what you were saying, I think you were talking about Tri Valley, but this is some of the, we're talking about.
What I was talking about on that was that we had a discussion and you indicated there might be some difficulty in nailing down whether or not, uh, the request would pass an audit.
Right, so, um, let me clarify on that. So, you know, we're looking at around eleven thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty-seven cents. That's the amount that, um, both Ashley and Pat, um, compared to what we've spent out, what you've actually checked out for, that's the amount that's remaining of the original two million nine hundred twenty-five thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars. So, um, it's a nice, small amount, um, and so what we were thinking, um, as, and what I shared with you, you can look at, you know, funds, things that you have previously requested, and that meets all the, um, I would say not necessarily audit requirements, but it, it is in line with all of your actions thus far. So as we have continued to communicate with the Office of Recovery and the Governor's Office, you know, the fact that the way that you all did it was an application process that was open to everybody, that followed all those guidelines and, you know, uh, had the memorandum of understanding, all of that appears to really set us up well for future audits from the Office of the Inspector General. So I would be a little bit hesitant, just a little bit, again, it's your decision, to bring in an entity that had not gone through that process, right? And so, and Tri Valley did not apply originally and has, uh, sent in just the letter of requesting. So, um, so while it is not a bad thing at all, um, I do, I would be a little hesitant on veering from our system that we have put into play thus far. So that's my only little caution. You know, we thought we were being smart at the beginning, um, as we laid out the process that we did, but as we have sat in on technical assistance calls and, um, and answered all kinds of questions in this process, um, it is a solid process, I'm just gonna say, we did, we all did real good. Um, that's what I'm gonna say on that, um, because it is, um, very transparent and it is very accountable. So that would be my only word of caution on any requests that came in after and are not, do not have a super direct tie to COVID. So the other thing that has become incredibly obvious through all of our technical assistance calls is this new phrase that we're using, which is nexus to COVID nineteen. N E X U S, so nexus to COVID nineteen. Every expenditure, we have to, we have to have a category that says nexus to COVID nineteen, and we have to articulate what it is. And I would say the health department request is a direct nexus to COVID nineteen. We couldn't hit the bull, we couldn't hit the bullseye any closer unless we look at something for ascension, which the folks that are actually treating individuals with COVID nineteen. So that, um, in my mind, taking into those two pieces of consideration are the safest and also the most easy to implement in the few days that we have, we've made.
Well, and also in a conversation with, with Rebecca Johnson was that, uh, this, this funds could possibly be used for ramping up for the vaccination coming up in the, hopefully near future. Um, they need to get the supplies on hand for that.
So I don't want to, you know, I can't see you, so, uh, you know, usually I look at you guys and say, you know, it's your, it's your deal, right? It's your decision, um, and it is a fairly small amount of money, right? Um, so it could be spent very quickly, um, but it does, it does need to, to be addressed. But those were just a couple of things that I wanted to bring to your attention and, um, in addition to the email information that I sent you last night. But again, it's totally up to you. What would need to happen, the action that we would need from you is to, um, simply say this dollar amount is being assigned to this entity for this purpose. And then what we'll do on the back end is immediately issue an MOU, we'll put it in the correct category. So for example, if you use the health department example, um, we would, there is a category of, uh, testing and tracing, we would put it in there. And then we will immediately get with the health department and say, start giving us some payroll information, you know, and then do a document.
The other part of that is, it's not only just, uh, the payroll aspect of it, it's also supplies for that payroll, because they're gonna have to purchase computers, because they're working off, offsite and things like that.
Right, and so if they need, so an example, in Crawford County, I think spark funds probably paid for, uh, six or eight, uh, uh, cell phones for these contact tracers to use, the coverage on them for a certain number of months, um, jet packs for them to be able to get on a computer from wherever they are. So yes, I would say, um, we would categorize it as tracing and then all of those expenditures can fall under it. That would be what we would do on the back end.
And how about the, uh, the supplies that they may purchase for, for vaccination, because that's a part of it?
Yes, that, yes.
Alright.
Sure.
They can buy their seven thousand dollar freezer.
And if you just give us a motion.
No kidding.
Excuse me, sorry.
Well, Monica, then if, if the action you need from us is a motion, I would, um, make the motion that we allocate those, uh, that specific amount of eleven thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty-seven cents to this S E K multi-county health department, um, as, as discussed.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, we'll move forward with that today. And, uh, Lynn, Rebecca is your contact, is that correct?
Yes, Rebecca is the contact. Okay, the other issue is that I received a phone call, uh, from Tony, uh, about administrative, uh, spark money that we have left over, and it's about forty thousand dollars. And I also, I discussed this with Monica, uh, and she felt that the, the cleanest way to, to, uh, spend this resource was to let Will buy more, uh, supplies for the COVID, um, in his department, that way it would satisfy, uh, again, the audit.
So a little bit of background on that.
Well, as Will told me this morning, that he could spend it very quickly because, uh, there's a very big, a very dire need for more PPE and supplies.
I know they provided a, a lot of supplies for our, uh, home for the aged communities and, and, uh, replenishing that, I think would be a.
And that's part of the process that we'd want to do, is that this would be community access also.
So do we need to make action on that as well?
Yes.
Okay.
No.
No?
So, uh, Lynn, what I think on that is, so just a quick reminder, when you appropriated all of the money, you put aside, um, uh, what is, what we're calling county administration.
Right.
Really, all that was for was the Green Bush fee, and then, um, at that time, we, um, had some stand-up costs, like for example, to, um, to get information out about, you know, the program, those kind of things. Well, there, you still have forty thousand less in there, so it can be.
Is that forty thousand, is that, is that figured?
Nope, um, we are waiting on one credit card bill to come in, but it's really closer, um, we're thinking it might come in about thirty-eight thousand, um, but we're waiting on one more credit card bill to come in. I was on the phone with Ashley before. So what I would, what I would, um, think is appropriate, because we're, we got one bill hanging out there, is if you just simply, um, said the remainder of the county admin fund be directed towards PPE.
Okay.
And I think that would be a significant enough motion, um, let's go ahead, if it's okay with you to do it as a motion, but use the number remainder, because honestly, we're just waiting on one more number to come in. And then Will will move forward and get those dollars spent.
Very good, so, what, you're a motion?
I second that motion. I second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
Perfect, thank you all. The only thing else I wanted to let you know is you see that we are processing receipts and they're coming in nicely. I gave you the numbers in the email of where we are. As you can see, we still have a million dollars or so more to gather the receipts. We now have a team of six people processing receipts this week and we are going through those and matching them up against the original memorandum of understanding. And then we're also gathering spreadsheet information, which then gets copied and pasted and will be sent in for your next report, which is due on the tenth. So we are well on our way to getting that done. I'm not horribly concerned about the million dollars. Our team has divided up everybody we hadn't heard from in Bourbon County and made personal contact with them to ensure that, you know, they, they knew what to do and how to do it. We've gone so far as selling out forms with people on the phone and driving them to them. So, but overall, people have been very responsive. We feel very comfortable with everything that we have received and documented in. After the reporting next week, we'll take another look and say, okay, this is still what's outstanding. If there is anything that is not payroll related, we will be in direct contact with those folks saying, you know, tick tock, time's up and we'll continue to work with them. We also have ascertained the level of concern regarding any supply chain problems. The Office of Recovery has issued a memo on how to deal with supply chain issues, so you know, backwaters and such. And we're feeling quite good in Bourbon County. There doesn't appear to be a huge supply chain issue and things are getting in and people are being able to pay for them. So we continue to watch those even though they're, they are large numbers, but I'm feeling good. You know, when we first started this process, I said to you, I'd be the enforcer and I have been. I've talked to a lot of nice people there in Bourbon County and they're all very happy to follow any rules that you guys have all put out. So that's the report on that. Next Tuesday, I hope to be able to just quickly give you a report on where we are with receipts and if we have run into any concerns over the next week. Again, we're fighting against that clock and trying not to get up to the end of December to have any surprises. So with that, that's all I have for you guys unless you have questions for me.
Hi, Don, anyone else?
I appreciate the emails that you provide, giving us a chance to look at this material before we come into session. Appreciate it a lot.
Sure thing. Okay, I'll be in touch. Everybody stay safe out there.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. A little behind schedule, Jesse. Mr. Walker?
Yeah.
Want to come out?
Oh, that, that's a microphone too.
Well, I probably need that, but the point is, is I'm here to address that commission on a ongoing issue with Unique Road that runs off of west of Ninety Fifth Street. And here, a couple of years ago, kind of come out and grow a little bit and we're having some washout issues with it and maintaining it. The county told me that they could never find any documentation for whether it was ever a county road or whether it's been owned or closed. This has been an ongoing issue. What I'm wondering is where the county stands on this. I give you also some information, some paperwork here a couple of years ago that has some pre, some pre-port rulings here in Kansas that stated that even if there wasn't documentation of the road that opened or maintained by the county, if it had been maintained by the county, the county owned the road by prescription or they were required that it be opened by prescription. That doesn't mean that the county has to keep it maintained, that's up to the commissioners. What I want to know is where you all stand on this and my main deal is, is just maybe have the road graded or maintained once or twice a year. I mean, I'm not hard to get along with. I know this is ongoing situation for other secondary roads. An example of a road been opened by prescription would be Ninety Fifth Street, which is a mile south of me. And there was a bridge closure here over in the seventies. And that road was opened up through a low water crossing across from it. And it had been maintained by the county and they closed the COVID here a few years ago because of a whole hole in it, but they still do a little work on the county's place. And that's just an example by, I'm just wondering where you all stand on it. And I feel that maybe you're just trying to put me off by attrition and I'll just give up on it, but that's not.
So we've been in cohabitation. Hang on for me. Go ahead, Justin.
Mr. Rock, we appreciate you being here. You actually started a process two years ago that we're actually still working on and we apologize for not getting to the resolution on this quick, more quickly, but we have done a lot of homework. We found out through research that in 1986, the county redid its maps. And so why that's a starting point, why it's important is, is that I believe, and I've said this before, that we have lots of roads in our county that we don't know if they've been vacated, non-vacated, who's responsible for them, are they lanes, are they, I've got, I'm actually working on two separate projects as we speak about some old vacated roads that we don't know where the actual stopping point was. So we're looking for the resolution from 1986. We're hopefully going to be finding that soon. Once we find that resolution, we're going to open this up to the public and say, look, here's what happened in eighty six, these are the roads that were vacated, they're no longer county's responsibilities and then go back from that, from that point and realize, you know, with our new road and bridge director, finding out where and when and how we're going to do the roads that have been closed since eighty six, but we've been maintaining and making the decisions on a monetary standpoint of what roads are going to be maintained and what roads aren't. Or are the lanes are no longer part of our roads infrastructures.
So how does that figure in with the pre-port ruling that once a road has been maintained by the county, that it is a public road?
Right, I can, I understand where you're coming from on that and I've read that case. If the commission decides to maintain that road, that is up to the commission.
Absolutely, that's what I said.
Yeah, the commission can also.
So therefore, if the commission could, go ahead.
If the commission decides not to maintain that road, that would be the commission's decision also.
Right, so that where it comes back to the vote.
Right.
Where if they.
Well, and Eric's here, you know, there's, we have four queries in our county. They're producing gravel, they're, we have, how many road graders?
Seven.
Seven road graders. We were just in the back room talking there. We're working on a two-week cycle for each district so that every two weeks, we know that every road in that district has been graded. You know, the amount of gravel, I've learned a lot more about rock queries than gravel that I ever wanted, but the gravel that has to be produced to put on those roads, we're behind, is my understanding. We've got our crusher, we, we got a new crusher we got to look at. I mean, there's lots of things that we need to look at to see and how we're going to maintain all of these roads. I mean, there's over eleven hundred miles of gravel roads in our little county.
Okay, and the other question that I have for you is, last week I had told them to come out and put a load of gravel on that road because it was getting, it was like it was impossible.
Right.
Okay, now if that's county road, or if it's deemed to be, to be done, what is my life going to be for doing stuff like that to that road?
Right.
Because I mean, I can't, you know, on a road.
Well, that's, that's, and that goes right to our point that we've have concerns with. I mean, obviously, this is, you know, a lawyer has a different job function than the commission does. I talk about foreseeability, liability, you know, things of that nature. In this case, if you're putting your gravel on our county road and someone goes on that road and because of that gravel slides into the ditch and there's harm, there's, there's a liability issue.
Right, or like a UPS truck wants to put it on top of the field.
Exactly, exactly right. So we, we have had offers in the past to help with our county roads and unfortunately, because of the liability issues, we've declined those, declined those offers. So it's a matter of, you know, who's responsible for that road. I mean, a lane into a farm field is not, it might have been a road back in nineteen twenty seven, which Commissioner O'Hare's discovered some of those roads. I mean, I've been on those roads up in his district where it actually has a road sign and it ends up in a river bottom into some fields and it's not passable and it, it's, goes to nowhere. So, and I believe there's about a hundred and eighty to a hundred and fifty miles of those roads in our county that have fallen through the cracks. And we've talked about this before, there is a lot of work on the commission's end to get this done and we're progressing. Shane Walker's been working on some mapping. I know Jim, when he was here in his department, was looking into some roads that we had talked about and right now I'm actually working on a road for an individual with the same kind of backstory on Sixty Fifth Street, so.
But I mean, the point is, you know, like I said, if I'm doing things to that road right now and there is no action or movement by the commission, you know, what is my recourse?
Well, I, yeah, I, I'm chuckling because my, if I was a commissioner, which I'm not, I would say that road belongs to, you know, when you vacate a road, half of it goes to one property owner, half of it goes to the other property owner, unless the entire lane's owned by that property owner, they would get that road. So it would become, if you on both sides of that road, you would get that road and that road would become yours. Right, I understand. But then it goes almost like a fence viewing type thing, you know, who's responsible for that vacated road once it's vacated? And that actually gets interesting on a civil suit on the private landowner's side, not on the commission's side. So there is a disconnect and it, and we feel, we actually understand where you're coming from, but we have some issues on our end that, I've talked to Chairman O'Hare about this actually a week ago, about how we're going to have to really spend some time with this. And with our new commission, they're going to have to designate someone to spend the time to get this done because it's not an easy project. Because there's more than just your road.
So for clarity.
Well, I realize it works. I've had other neighbors and people speak about this situation to me because they've had the same problem.
Right.
So for clarity, it's a section line where this road existed, but that section road doesn't go through all the way, it just goes back to the alleys.
No, at one time it did because there was a bridge back on my neighbor's property with the concrete, the old concrete is rammed out.
So, so when the bridge went, the road got.
Well, it just kind of went, yeah. By the way, I mean, like a lot of these roads, as population decreased and houses moved, the roads just weren't used.
Right.
And what it was is an old military wrote it one time, so they come down here to put it stuff.
And the really, the really interesting part of this is the legal part for me where the, where the fascination actually comes from is, and Laura Holdridge has been working on this too, is that, you know, how many roads are like this that have not been vacated? I mean, he's out doing eleven hundred miles worth of roads and maybe two hundred miles of those are these exact type, you know, we experienced one here south by T and C and we have all these roads that people are wanting to maintain that we shouldn't, the taxpayer shouldn't have to maintain a road that is being used exclusively by one individual. And I think we have a lot of roads like that.
But that's not fair either because I mean, you may blacktop this road out here for everybody else.
Right, right.
But if I can't get out of my residence.
No, no, completely, no, no, I'm not saying.
Then it's not doing any good to pay taxes to you. I pay just as much taxes as anybody else.
No, I'm saying like, I'm using an exact scenario by T and C. I'm saying that road that's in front of your house absolutely should be maintained by the, by the road, if it's an open road to the general public, absolutely should be maintained.
Right, because I mean, my dad's man can't come there, the UPS man can't come there.
I'm just talking about this road that's been, where the bridge went out, it hasn't been, there's been a question since nineteen seventy. We have, we have more than one road from nineteen seventy. This is a hundred-year-old problem.
And so the eighty-five, the thing that you're talking about there is nine one one.
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six, nine one one addressability. It also.
Renamed all roads.
It has GIS information and that's been the standard that we've been going back to.
Yeah, they went in and actually did surveys on every piece of property in the county.
Right, instead of going rural route two, you're eleven eighty-five, two hundred and forty, I mean, so it was a massive change.
When the addresses were, and they just assumed that that was a offshoot of Ninety Fifth and put not me on, not Unique Road, but on Ninety Fifth library.
Well, and the other part of this that's important to keep in mind is, is that those, there was public hearings in nineteen eighty-six, allegedly. I mean, I think I was in middle school. So I mean, allegedly, there, there was hearings, public hearings about which roads are open, which roads are closed. I mean, there was a, a time for everyone to come speak their piece and we don't need to reinvent the wheel, it was already done.
And I think the process started in nineteen eighty-four and very started in nineteen eighty-six.
Yes.
But I think that Roy Stewart had that road when my kids were going to school, they had it ravelled, so the school bus could go up there and turn around and get my kid and come back.
Right.
And that's when it first started being ravelled and before that, they just graded it because it was a house up there, it was a dirt road, kept a distance to it, so.
Well, I mean, I think there's some logical, practical parts of this too. I mean, if there's a part where a school bus needs to do a turnaround in a, in a, not a vacated road, we should maintain that road for safety issues, but you know, there's, there's just so many of these roads. I mean, there really is. I mean, literally in the last three months, we've had two of these come up and I'm working on one right now to try to figure out how it was vacated and the agreements that were made between the landowners and the commission because the commission was involved. And this was in two thousand and four. So I'm dealing with a sixteen-year-old problem that is a problem. I mean, there's, there's tension, possible litigation because of it. So we've got to figure these out because we're just, this is an ongoing problem that I've dealt with this county council for, going on seven years now.
Yeah, I think the intention was to have these public hearings and have this done by now, but there's been a few things that kind of.
Yeah, you got to be able to find the paperwork.
Well, the nineteen eighty-six hearing, this, the public hearings, I think have already been done. I think Ms. Holdridge would maybe, none of us were here then, but the box that Ms. Holdridge received from Kendall hopefully will do us some clarification, but I think we're still looking for the eighty-six.
Resolutions.
Resolutions.
And I know Laura's got a tremendous job because I've worked with Laura quite often for one of these roads and looked at the maps and there's roads out there that started and ended in the middle of pasture.
Okay, let's go from here with this road then, that we're having problems with finding out if it's closed or open. Yes, if we decide that, the commission decides that it's closed, can the landowners decide that and deal with it?
There's a, there's a process for, there is a process for that to occur, yes. You have to petition.
I actually looked at the property lines on, on that and I don't have any right of way on my part of the plan from my service.
But the question is, is that there is a way to petition the commission to have a closed, a closed road to be reopened, that there's a legal process for that to occur, yes. But my, but my point, my point is, is that we don't even, we don't even have a starting point. We're still trying to figure out the road up in your neck of the woods that runs into that field that we have a sign that says it's our road. I mean, Eric's maintaining it and see the, we don't even have a designation of low maintenance roads. We're maintaining all the roads that we believe that are open. And some of those roads don't need to be maintained because they're getting used, you know, during hunting season, four months out of the year and the rest of the time they're not being used. So to me, that's a taxpayer money issue. But I, I do believe that this is a, this is a big project.
But basically, that's why I'm here, is promote discussion and get something going on for the situation.
I know we've been working on a very close day of working on trying to get this resolved.
I think that we.
And it's been very time consuming.
And I'm not, I'm not making excuses.
We've got what you're all here for.
I'm not making excuses, but hopefully once we get, I feel like, you know, I don't, I never know when COVID's going to be over, but if we can start transitioning away from some things that we've been doing internally about dealing with the pandemic, I think we're going to be able to really focus. I think in two thousand and twenty-one, I hope, one of the goals I'd like to have is to have this situation taken care of by October or November of, of next year, which is going to make Eric's life easier because he's going to know what roads need to maintain.
Ninety-Fifth and Unique.
Ninety-Fifth and Unique is what we're looking at.
But it's not going to be a four or five-hour a week job. It, it's going to be something that needs to be.
Well, I know right now we've been working this for about three years.
Yeah, I totally agree with you. Yeah, I totally agree with you.
And I just didn't want it to get lost in the scuffle of everything. I know, like you said, COVID and everything else that's been going on, and I didn't want it just to get lost in the scuffle of everything.
And we appreciate it because it is on our radar, we're working on it.
Trying to bring it to everybody's attention. So now just monitoring it for everybody else.
Yep, because you're, unfortunately, you're not the only person in your circumstance with what's going on. I know of two others that we're working on right now. We appreciate your patience.
Well, thank you both for your time.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, gentlemen, next thing I want to agenda is the bomb being locked bar. I think Justin's got some information on that.
I think Justin's got some information on that.
This, this actually, we haven't had, unfortunately, we haven't been able to banter like we used to, because of everything that's happened over the last nine months. But this actually is a much bigger issue, I think, than just the Omni Lock Box. This is a personnel matter that we are not gonna identify anybody specifically, but talking about a universal type of person to handle all the different things that are going on within our organization, substantial changes have happened. When I first came here in two thousand and fourteen, we, we really did talk about Colbert's ditches and potholes. We had some personnel matters that were important, and we had some things that we dealt with legally that are completely different than what we're dealing with now. I think that we need to start looking at changes that are occurring within our county and what the county is possibly thinking about doing in the future with the new, new, new building, new administrative roles, new time-on-task, things of that nature. You know, I know that, I appreciate, it was a hard vote, but I appreciate what's happening with economic development, but now we're moving into another cycle, and I think we've mentioned this before, is that I think this commission's gonna have to really focus on healthcare in two thousand and twenty-one. And with that comes lockbox, EMS, administration, business, data, budgets, paying bills, I mean, on and on. So I think this is way more than an Omni Lock Box. I think we're, we're, right now, we've solved, temporarily have solved our problem with a really good ten ninety-nine employee, I believe, based off the conversation I had last Wednesday, that we're caught up, or getting caught up with our lag that we had with our deposits and our uploads into the system. So what, right now, the lockbox isn't needed. It was needed six months ago, because we were having some lags, we were having some problems with our accounts receivable. But I think those problems with our ten ninety-nine employee have pretty much gone away. I know with Eric, there's been some issues with some budgetary items, you know, billing, things of that nature. So it's kind of a universal problem on, on that end with, with how that structure was set up with our employee. And it, no fault to anybody, it's just a matter of overload, you know, amount, so much information was coming through one funnel that it was hard to get it all done. So with adding on this new, if the commission decides to go that route, adding on this new endeavor is gonna create, I think, an entirely new position that I've talked about for years. You know, I think we're gonna need someone that's gonna be, not an administrator per se, but someone that can look at the day-to-day numbers and make sure we're on the up and up with accounts receivable and our budgets and, not with just Road and Bridge or with Omni, but also with the possible of adding a, a medical mall facility into our portfolio. So it's a, it's a bigger conversation, I think, than just an Omni Lock Box, in my opinion.
Agreed.
Yep. And I think that having that universal tool to help solve a lot of problems, I think, you know, Commissioner O'Hare, five, six months ago, was given the task of handling some administrative duties that some other people within our organization were handling, and I think he's seen firsthand how difficult it can be not having a centralized person to bounce questions off of, you know, the lack of authority, the way our former government is, and the, the, having to have the three commissioners in the same room to make a decision sometimes causes huge problems, because you can't make a decision that's really important to make that day. You know, sometimes it's miniscule, sometimes it's a pure labor question or something of that nature, and it's hard to deal with an HR issue when you don't necessarily have somebody to have that authority. And we recently experienced that with the lack of a centralized person to say, hey, you need to go do X, Y, and Z. And as I went through the organization, we really couldn't find anybody that was comfortable taking on that role, because no one had been designated to have that role. So it's kind of a universal, you know, almost like one of those multi-tools. It's got the screwdriver, the corkscrew, the wrench, you know, all those things. We don't have that person within our organization, and it has absolutely, in my opinion, caused us problems.
Agreed.
And we've tried our best to keep our litigation and possible exposure legally, but even then, we've had some uncomfortable moments, and I think you guys have experienced some of those. But it's just a universal tool person that we don't have, and I think we could solve that problem with someone that could come in and kinda do our de facto HR director, de facto.
Business director.
Business management person to make sure that we don't have the kind of problems that we've had over the last couple of months. Because everyone has got, their plates are full. I mean, everyone wears multiple hats. And our multiple hat-wearing has caused some of us to have some really stressful moments.
The size of the organization we have, it's, to me, it's interplayd and crazy enough to have this position.
Well, and the other part of that is that the, if you actually get into it and, and actually get your, get your feet wet in the process, you'll find out how overwhelming it can be. And, you know, I know that Jeff's been in the same position I have, on terms of that too, that any large organization has someone that you can go to that can answer most of the questions.
And, you know, I've, and, how do I? I mean, Eric, Eric can attest to this, and no fault to Eric's or anyone else in his position, I, I mean, there's phone calls that I get that sometimes I have to answer because I need to, but I've called Commissioner O'Hare and say, hey, I had to make a decision that needed to happen really quickly, I feel uncomfortable about how the answer was, I know it was the right answer, but I had to give the answer. And, you know, I don't wanna do that, but sometimes you have to, and we ran into that. I mean, I would call the buzzsaw two weeks ago. And I, and we brought this up before, but at this point, it, it, it got very uncomfortable. Like, we needed to have someone to, to be there for that wall, that firewall, and we had no one in our organization to do that. And it's, and it was uncomfortable.
Well, I mean, I would say with, you know, just with the assumption of being a healthcare provider by virtue of having, operating an ambulance service, you know, we did what we could, we contracted with Omni to handle the billing.
Right.
But is that a function that we wanna continue farming out, or do we wanna?
Well, I think.
Do we wanna find the person that is capable of, of doing the full cycle?
What I, what I, what I don't, what we don't have is that person to touch the process. We have a really good director for EMS, and we have Omni who's our billing, but to bridge that gap, we don't have that person. So that, the checks and balances are occurring, so we know that everything's cool and good with Omni, everyone's going good with the day-to-day operations. And then what we're also missing is that phone call from a concerned citizen that says, hey, I can't pay my bill this month. Hey, could you help me out, could I get a payment plan, could I? Right.
The business is a hundred thousand dollars a month.
Right.
Business or.
It's a one point.
Twenty-two million dollars a year.
And we have nobody, I mean, I shouldn't say nobody, we don't have that person.
Anybody with the skin in the game, that's the face, that's the, where the buck stops.
Right. We don't have the person making sure that we're not buying too much gauze. We don't have the person that's saying, hey, Omni, you're not, because that takes a daily checking, and that's not just that department, there's other things that have happened in the, you know, Road and Bridge that we're missing that contact person to say, hey, every day, we need to make sure that this is being reconciled and being controlled. So that's, that's kind of the universal talking point, and I think it.
It's knowing the condition of your flaws.
That is absolutely a wonderful analogy. Yeah, we don't have the.
You need herdsman or husbandman or whatever they call it, in the animal world.
We absolutely, that is a really good analogy, that's what we're missing, and it's come back to haunt us a little bit. Because we, we don't have that HR person to have someone that's a director or even elected official go in and say, hey, you know, I get the phone call, I'll answer it, but I, you know from prior dealings with me, that I've always been very uncomfortable, because you don't want your county councilor to be your witness.
That's what we want.
Right. Well, yeah, I'm, right, right.
So have they got the Omni Lock Box on the?
I don't mind doing it, because I'm part of the team, but, right.
So the contact point is addressing the situation, but in the big picture, there's.
This is, this is, this is one of these areas that, you know, I don't, I think we would be able to tie a whole bunch of things into one person that could create more balance within our organization, because we're having multiple problems. And we've been talking about an HR, our HR problem for.
Couple, three years, well, maybe, maybe longer than that.
Yeah, I think we, I think my first conversation, or our first conversation we've had about these problems actually go back to early, early fifteen.
Yep.
For my notes. And that we're taking on, i- if, if the commission decides to take on the, the medical mall, it, we have a huge responsibility out there. We're gonna need to know that the floors get cleaned correctly, you know, who's the person that's gonna be in charge of making sure everything is checked and balanced, you know, or the, setting up the contracts to get the pipes fixed, or making sure the roof contractors are doing their job. I mean, Eric can't do it, I mean, the sheriff's department has their, their, their hands are full, Kendall doesn't wanna do it, I mean, it just goes on and on, who's gonna be that?
That single point of responsibility, who, CHC has a point person, right now, it's.
Right, we need someone that, that CHC or Via Christie or whoever's out there to say, hey, I'm gonna call this person, and not get, you know, oh, no, you need to call the sheriff's office, oh, no, you need to call.
And the collecting of the rent or reimbursement, all this stuff.
All this stuff, yeah, yeah.
Attention.
And the more tenants you have out there, the more problems you're gonna have with not having that contact person. And this person's gonna be a jack-of-all-trades, I mean, there's, there's more that I, I mean, I could go for another hour about all the different things that this person could end up doing. Because we've outsourced some other things too, within our organization, that I think this person could help with. I mean, Terry Serser's been brought in to help with training and things like that, and we have, we have some ability to maybe have this person do something like that too.
I think it's one that has some budgetary and accounting experience, that we can eliminate probably twenty thousand dollars' worth of money we pay to an outside audit agency to, to keep track of our books.
Right.
And that's over and beyond and off.
Yeah, and, and really, with everything going on in our, in our, when I say county, when I say our community, that includes the city of Fort Scott, there's all these opportunities to just do some, you know, multitasking with different individuals. You know, our IT department could help with their IT department, you know, business manager, I mean, it just goes on and on, so.
And I know our IT department has been asked if they could assist in some endeavors in.
I'm saying, I'm saying much bigger than that.
Well, I am too.
I mean, even with.
I am too.
Our Road and Bridge Department, you know, talking about just things that, I mean, Commissioner Fisher, this commission has been talking about that synergy for years.
Yes.
And having that tie-in person, we have no direct-to-person to go to, and I think it's, it's time, in my opinion, based off of what's happened over the last month especially, the last two weeks have really shown our lack of this connection and, and, and touch person and, and contact person, because we, we have, we've lost track of a couple of things.
We failed to recognize the symptoms of the.
Yeah, we lost.
Lost the sparkle in that little calf's eye.
Yeah, we've lost the herd, or, or a couple sheep.
It's not so bad.
No. No.
All right.
But it's important, I think, and I think it needs to happen sooner than later. I don't think we need to wait another four or five years.
I know that we've, we've had this discussion, you and I, many times.
Yeah.
And if you don't mind, I would like to work with just, just kinda come up with a comprehensive list of what we could do and how much money we could save by maybe moving to this, this arena.
Do you need a motion to do that?
Yeah.
I would, yeah, I'd make a motion. As said, I second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And to follow up to that motion, I'll make sure that when we come back, maybe either before or right after Christmas, to talk about what that job description might look like, and kinda just having that universal tool.
So basically, you're looking for gaps where things are falling through the cracks and articulating them on a document.
Yeah, I wanna make sure that when we talk about falling through the cracks, I'm talking about, you know, a load that, when you have, you're wearing seven hats, you can't keep, or plates, you know, I like splitting, you know, spinning plates, you can't keep them all spinning all the time, because it's impossible. So one falls, and it's not the person who's spinning the plate's fault, it's just they have so many plates spinning, they can't keep them all going.
And HR, HR takes up an awful lot of, of time also, just working with, with the personnel issues, and I know you're on that continually.
Well, but outside of that, outside of that, Kendall's office is doing payroll, she's doing healthcare, she's doing, I mean, all these different things that she's responsible for, and we, when we have an HR emergency, Kendall's office, she, you know, nobody's in place to be the point person. So we have five different people with their input happening, and it really should be one, one point person.
Right.
And you don't want your attorney being a witness.
No, we don't.
Which is, we, we, it's happened now a couple times.
Couple times.
Yeah. I should never, I should never be, I should never being, I should never be interviewed by law enforcement for any reason outside of my own stupid stupidity, if I decide to make a stupid decision. So.
All right, so here we go.
Thank you for your time.
Oh, they gift cards, Laura, are you still there?
Yep.
All right, Laura sent me, I'm sure she sent other people too, it looked like, about the, the gift cards for, so.
So I have received some feedback in support of using our gift cards to support local businesses.
Me too.
And I think that's the right thing to do, you know.
Agreed.
This is the back of the Chamber.
You know, on the downside, you don't get to spin this at Walmart, but is that, is that really a downside? You're gonna spin it at places like Don's Spirits and Line.
Walmart is a big box store. They didn't, they don't get hurt during COVID shutdowns, the, our, our local people, and it also helps the Chamber. I contacted all of our local people. This just helps, also helps the Chamber, because it's also a fundraiser for them, because they get a portion of how many Chamber bucks, you know, and there's a lot of young kids that don't go shopping, you know, Walmart didn't get hurt, they don't do a lot, put back to our community. And everybody on that, on that list there, of course, those are identical, it's just three Chamber bucks done, and G and W is now on that list, after talking with Rita and G and W. Yesterday, I was able to get G and W and Rita hooked up, and G and W is now on that. And so what better way than our government, our, our county, to support the county community by doing Chamber bucks? And Rita said they usually do like, if you say you're gonna do twenty-five dollars, they do like two tens and a five, because you have to use it all at once. Well, you know, young kids, he's, he's got young kids at the, the jail, they can go and fill up their car at Five Corners, you know, ten bucks goes a long ways in your car, grab a pizza, you know, go to the butcher block, buy a gift at Five, or Iron Star, Sunshine Boutique, but what better way to?
So I moved that, you know, we've been talking about gift cards and distribution in time for the holiday, I moved that we move, I moved that we move forward and select Chamber bucks as our mechanism of providing that holiday turkey if the, if so, so desired, but utilizing this local program for the gift card.
Here, a second.
Do we need an amount, maybe? There's twenty-five, twenty-five dollars for employee, and who qualifies?
I think last week, you said everybody gets the.
Except for the commissioners, who you know they did in the past.
I think, well, I think Kendall, didn't everybody, I don't know about you, Fishers, but every, because I got one last year, I think all, they did not, okay, so everybody got them, and last week, you said twenty-five dollars.
I, I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Is that a full, is that full-time or a full-time and part-time?
And that's a good question, and then the question, we probably have some EMPs that are now, you know.
What did we do last year, Kendall, you know? All employees. So let's answer that question.
All employees, I think there's a hundred and fifteen on that list that was provided.
Something like that, I got it right here.
And Kendall, she just said you needed to call her and.
Hundred seventeen.
If you wanted something to say on it, like, from Bourbon County, and tell her, I told her a hundred, probably a hundred and three plus, she goes, oh my! So I told her it'd be somebody from the clerk's office, and I spoke to Rita.
Okay. Okay.
So that's all I am.
All in favor?
Well, thank you. Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Aye. No, not opposed. I'm for it.
Thank you. I think it helps our community. It's also a fundraiser for the chamber because they get a little bit back from this too. So, thank you.
Okay. It toughens the longevity pay. I got your spreadsheet right in front of me.
Okay. So let me explain the spreadsheet. Basically, it's just an employee list that's provided from an electronic list. And in the top of the spreadsheet, you can play around with variables. One of them is, uh, the qualifying date. And then the other one is years of service. And of course, in, in one of the yellow boxes, uh, fifty-one thousand dollars, that, that you could also change that number. And it, it basically self-adjusts so you can look down through the spreadsheet and it will distribute that based upon a formula. Okay?
Right.
Now, there, there are some questions in, in, and I, I've talked with H R. You know, we, we currently have longevity pay, and it's based on a formula that the computer can figure out. It's based on anniversary service date. Okay? So we have employees, uh, that have had several tours of duty with the county. And I'm thinking of our public, public works director here. He was a former employee, and he had a tour of duty somewhere else, and he came back to us in this capacity. And what I've seen done is you take that previous service and you take his, the, the current hire date, and then you, you just sort of squeeze these times together and you get a, an effective service start date back here that would, or an anniversary service date. It's, it's called an R system to which the longevity benefits pay. And I, I had a discussion with, with, you know, Bobby Reeves here. He's, he's also had a few tours. And, and anyway, that's, that's the way I think. When you're trying to reward a, uh, in, in customers, frequent customers, you're, you're, you're trying to give them credit for all the shopping you've done at the store. And it's sort of a loyalty thing. And that's really what we're trying to promote is we're trying to enforce longevity, working for the company, working for Bourbon County. And so, in my opinion, because the system can support it, that we should consider using the anniversary service date and making sure that we accommodate for employees pre-prior sequences of engagement. Okay? So it's pointed out to me that, you know, a certain individual did not, started in two, twenty thirteen, but they, they were gone for a period of time. And so the, the, the calculation was, uh, you know, the start date was in question, which made the calculation somewhat skewed. And in some other cases, that sort of start date that was on that sheet was the most recent hire. So there's a few things that we need to do to clean up the data. But the process of, you know, i- if you look in the notes section, fifty-one thousand divided, you know, with, with, assuming everything on that sheet was correct, it'd come up to about a hundred and five dollars if you distribute it for five years, the qualification. It came up a hundred dollars if your eligibility was four years, and maybe ninety-five dollars if eligibility was three years. Okay? Based upon the information. So I think we can reasonably, comfortably, without blowing the budget, do the hundred dollars a year for years, you know, you five and on. And that's, I guess that would be kind of my recommendation. So I know...
I know, I know also that when we were going through this when I was a younger person, that, uh, we had different benefits started five years. And, and I was always looking forward to that, that five-year period because it meant more money, and it also meant more time off and some other ancillary services. And so it was a target that, that, that they used to, to entice people to stay.
So I, I would say our papers is, is geared, and that is the, uh, let's just say, retirement account is geared for fully vesting in five years. Year one, it might be twenty percent, forty percent. You know, so you have vesting schedules in your retirement. We learned last time that, that the, you get your three weeks vacation on year three. Is that right, Kendall? So, you know, they're, they're, in, in the spreadsheet, you know, you can actually lower the qualification to three years. But they're actually getting a benefit, sixty percent vested year three. Um, and they're getting an extra week vacation. So, so the benefits are, are growing. And, you know, the, the problem with, with, with putting it too early is you, uh, it, is the funding of it. It, it, it dissipates the, the, the wage differentiation for people with, with more and more experience. There's a finite pool of money that's being divided among anybody that is, let's just say, qualified or meets their experience requirement. And I agree with, with Lynn that typically this has been five years for, for these types of compensation.
Also, why, I, you know, also, with the sixty-one thousand dollars debt, and that's just capital and easy. But it hasn't improved what, what constitutional tax is already there.
And what he's saying is there's like, uh, you know, the FICA and the FUTA, some of that gets withheld from you. But the, the company, Bourbon County, matches some of that. And there's other benefits that are keyed upon compensation, um, that, that county, even though this fifty-one thousand dollar jackpot, jackpot, or longevity pool, if you will. I wouldn't be surprised if it's sixty-five thousand dollars cost to the county.
I wouldn't either.
To distribute it. Now, three years ago, I did a fairly detailed of, of what, uh, so, so the idea of longevity pay, we currently have a longevity pay structure. But it's, it's, Bobby, you said you had like seventy dollars for the year in, in longevity pay since, since you started, or something like that.
No, it's roughly like ninety-one bucks a year. It's three dollars and some change every check. So if you add times that by twenty-six, it's...
And that's a fixed figure, right?
Yeah. I don't know what the, how the, the chart is, but I guess for every year of service, it'd go up a nickel or a penny or a peanut or whatever. And, you know, if I was here thirty years, it would be higher than what it currently is now, obviously.
And those things that kind of strike me too, that people get five years to, to give them money. It's somebody that they're getting more money, and it's gonna be at the end of the year where they can use it.
So, so this year, it is a one-year, but we still have this longevity that's currently going on. And, and one of the things I think that we had always hoped would happen over the last three or four years was that this, instead of a lump sum, that this would be distributed throughout the year.
Different make it from.
Huh?
Different making of the profit.
If it's, this is a one-time deal. We're not talking about the same thing. But, but it moves us one step closer to, can we afford this as a benefit ongoing? And then, then rather than, you know, a thirty-year employee getting a lump sum check of three thousand dollars for longevity, you're gonna see it in, you know, twenty or thirty dollars a paycheck. And, and, uh, the, the, one of the things that we had is we had a father and a son that worked for the county, and they were at the same level of, let's say, pay grade. Well, one of them has thirty years of experience, and the other one has two, and yet they were making the same, same amount of money. So this longevity was, was also considered in, in attempts to provide that little, what, compensation for, you know, time at task, time with the firm, riding with the flag, that kind of thing. Uh, somebody with thirty years of experience is, is used to making decisions, uh, more efficiently than somebody with two years of experience.
So I have, I have a, a question. Um, I don't know why I have been kind of like deemed the, uh, employee council person or representative. But I've had some phone calls since our meeting yesterday. And, um, so currently on our checks, we're still getting the, the longevity. And then in twenty-twenty-one, in January, we'll still see that. So this is a one-time bonus, longevity bonus, if you will. Now, if a department head should come in next June or July and do our budgets, and Roden Bridge, or Kendall's office, or whosever, and tries to get, um, a wage increase for their people, is the commission gonna say, well, hold on, we gave you guys the bonus last year instead of giving raises?
I didn't, that discussion never, ever was part of, of anymore.
I'm, I'm just trying to cover some bases that, that may be entered in the past. Because if this isn't...
I, I will tell you, Bobby, what, what, what I've observed in my brief tour here is four years ago, the budget process was you did everything else, but you didn't touch the wages. And that was done, I don't know where that was done. I'm still trying to find out the answer. You know, three years ago, we made provisions to improving the wages for hourly people, and we did it with some discretion to target, uh, risk areas. Okay? Um, and that was the intention, I think, followed the, the other year and, and, and sort of rebase line using the studies that, well, prior year actually, to, to help us understand where the market is, and so we can be closer to the market. So...
I, I, well, I guess to simplify, my question is, is if the commission, and I understand it's gonna be a, a new commission next year, but if the commission says, hey, we're not giving raises in twenty-twenty-one for twenty-twenty-two because we gave you guys the longevity pay as a pay increase, I'm just trying to be open and transparent because the employees are gonna see that and be like, well, no, that was a, that was a bonus for longevity, and now they're saying that this is why we got it. So that, that was just a question that, that I had and other people had. And another, another one, um, I was told that when the commission started on this project, the longevity, that it was originally designed to cover all employees from year one to year thirty. Um, you know, like I said before, through just my department, and I have the highest turnover rate in the, in the county, and that's for another discussion later on. But I'm, the, the way my turnover's going, um, I'm hardly gonna have anybody hit that five-year mark. So I think if we, you know, I, I, I wish, I, I, I really wish all the employees were pooled to see what they would like because I would venture to say somebody might give up ten dollars, you know, to pass the buck on down the line for some of the other employees. That way, everything's the same.
Well, everything has to be the same at, uh...
That way, the employees from year one get it, year two...
I just know from industry standards, they're normally for five, five years to make an incentive for people to stay.
And, and then that's, that's your guys' decision. I'm just speaking on behalf of the little guy that don't have a voice. So...
Appreciate you. Thanks. And as far as considering this a pay raise, I don't think that discussion ever came up. And I don't think that should be used in discussion of, of wage increases.
So I think going back basically last, a year ago, a little over a year ago, when we were putting together the budgets, because this, the previous commission had a focus area on, on improving the wages to tw- to base year twenty-fifteen. And, and the idea of, uh, longevity pay had not fully been realized. You know, I think we did it with the hourly employees twenty-fifteen. I think we did it with the, the salary employees and elected officials, um, to twenty-fifteen.
No.
I'm gonna...
And, and so a little over a year ago, we budgeted fifty-one thousand dollars for longevity pay. And, and it's the intention of distributing that as a one-time payment. Now, what does a longevity pay, pay cost? So I've been pretty involved with, I guess, projections and stuff like that when we first started talking about it and, and writing the rules. And I never really considered, because of my experience in corporate, I never really experienced a longevity pay at, at year one. Like, you know. And I've heard from our acting H R person who says, although she's new at her job, she thinks that five years is a, is a reasonable, uh, year to start that, let's just say, differentiation.
If that's what you guys agree, that's what you guys agree. That's, that's on you, and everybody will just have to support it.
Just from past experience, and I'll, I'll say again, I might have missed one a little bit. I looked back in my, my career, and I found out that, that when I hired on with H M P, uh, I was awarded a year vacation after the first year. And then I got my next, second week of vacation, five years.
Not a week. Yes.
In one year. So I'm still five years. I got my two, and I got three weeks of vacation.
So I, I guess my, my, before you guys vote, my next question's gonna be is, then, obviously, the dates on here on some employees are wrong.
And we, I understand that.
And how, how are we going to, as a county or a commission, how are we gonna rectify and make sure that those dates are accurate? Are we gonna get with the employee?
The county courts could be the ones that, that they give us the, the dates, except for the ones that have red service.
So, so, and, and you, and those are important questions. And what, what I, what I'm looking for in a, you know, payer system, payroll benefit system, support, it's, it's easy to do a one-time thing, but, but our, our system can support, uh, doing this every pay period and just define the parameters. Okay? That the system can support it, and, and really, it's whenever you hire someone, or I'm sorry, when you rehire someone. They're already in the system. You have to look back and you have to pick off the start dates and the finish dates. And then you have to do a calculation, and then you have to just add that to the anniversary service date. And so there will be a process to verify that all of your prior experience will be, let's say, confirmed with, with an effective start date or an anniversary start date to where, uh, an employee is given credit for previous work engagements with full-time work engagements with the county.
Sure.
If that makes sense.
Well, and it was like the emails that I sent you yesterday after our talk. I mean, I went through there for, for my, my personnel and the sheriff's personnel. But I didn't know that those, how the system works doesn't pertain to me. That's not my office. I just wanted to make sure that the dates, somehow the, the, the computer system or our software was able to go back and get those dates as I had sent to you.
So, so, and, and I've been assured that we can, that, that it can be done. Uh, and, and basically, it's, it can be done routinely going forward when you rehire someone. It's just making sure that that effective service date is populated, not, not the default last hire date, or, you know, however it's been. But you have control of that, of that local variable that, uh, could be on that report, that same report. Instead of hire date, it would show you the effective service date, and then all those numbers would be correct. But yeah, when you, it's, it's, whenever you're defining something like this, uh, you know, where you're gonna get the information, how you're gonna use that to pay people, if, if the system supports it, it's sustainable. If the system doesn't support it, uh, it's a bad idea. If the system doesn't support it, it's a bad idea.
I'm gonna entertain a motion.
So, well, pertaining to longevity pay.
Yes.
You know, I'm gonna make the motion, but I also give a little rationale behind. You know, I've always looked at this as a, not a one-time event. I've always looked at longevity as in each check. Something that would fit within our current system. I know we're not doing that at this time. But I think in what we're doing here, if we, if some future commission decides to adopt a longevity pay policy, it would, we're doing the groundwork where this could be implemented in a subsequent year. Okay? And I think the amounts that we're talking about are consistent with models that we've previously provided. From memory, first year was 50-some thousand, second year 60-some thousand. And if you get a more mature organization, you know, we'll probably top out at, you know, maybe $100,000 that's going into this plot that's only $51,000 now as we're able to retain employees longer periods of time. So that's the big picture. We're looking at just this one little thing, but we're trying to set the criteria to where it's applicable if this becomes part of our standard operating procedure moving forward. And so my recommendation is to select the effective date either at the end of the year or when this benefit is paid.
Well, I'd say at the end of the year, because we're looking at calendar year.
Okay? At this point, we are. So I'm good with that. And then the other variable that we had to pick or to discuss was how many years of service for qualifying. And I know we mentioned five, and Bobby was understanding it was gonna start at year one. So what do we want to set that years of service for which you're qualified to receive a proportion of that longevity pay pool?
I mean, where I live now, we don't get longevity pay at all, so.
We've never.
So this is kind of a novel concept.
And I'm gonna qualify that as we haven't gotten a raise in four years. So I don't, I mean, not justifying what the past commissions have done, not justifying what I'm saying. I don't think that the challenge is minimum, but I'm not unique in what they've done, I don't think. But I do know people like Lindison and Jeff.
So, and that would be my recommendation too, based upon the fact that, you know, in your first year, you have this, I don't know, 90% salary, then you go, you have a raise in the first year. Third year, you get an extra week vacation. And longevity is, the other thing too, is it takes about four years to train someone, whether it's educational training, university training, or on-the-job training. And that's kind of what the longevity pay also tries to address, is a little wage differentiation.
I mean, I haven't spoken to you, Bobby, but I mean, I would love to sometime because, I mean, the cost of training an employee, I can't imagine we'd be able to achieve that. Well, I mean, to get. So I would love to see us be able to do something in the future, but we also have to start somewhere. And I wasn't involved in this until, when I went back seven, eight months ago.
But three years ago, when we were looking at the qualifying as five years, 50,000, 60,000, then 80,000 was kind of the projection of funding that over time. And it looked like you'd top out about $100,000 to the size of an organization.
That we were.
Yep.
Based upon.
Impression to retirement and other reasons.
So I will make a motion. And I move that we do a one-time longevity pay in addition to the current longevity pay that's in place that would compensate $100 a year per service beginning at year five, with the effective date being the last day of this year. And to be real granular about it, for someone with 4.9 years of experience by the end of the year, their benefit would be zero. For someone who has 5.01 years of experience at the end of the year, that benefit would be $500.
All right. Any discussion?
We haven't discussed, but we probably need to finalize this qualifying years of experience and put all that term concurrent. And then there's also, do elected officials, are they?
An elected official is not part of the.
But so there's rules like that that we need to add on.
Support occupational.
We have a motion, and was it seconded? I seconded.
Yes, it was. Any discussion? Any more discussion?
It will be paid.
Well, it'll be paid by the last payday in this year.
I think, so Terry Serser.
If you're gonna go off the anniversary date for, at the end of the year.
We are.
Then, but you're gonna pay it before that date.
Well, fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so, Ashley contacted the Terry Serser to advise to do it a separate check. And it has to do with withholdings. If those lump onto your other check, there's gonna be more.
Yeah, they take off more taxes if you just put it in on your regular check.
So then, do you have to make a motion? Or is it just up for discussion on prior years of service?
Well, we already had that discussion, I do believe. Do you want to put that in your motion that we use bridge service?
Bridge service?
Bridge service is all it is.
I'd like to amend the motion that is before the table to include.
Bridge service?
Bridged service. Or utilizing anniversary service date to account for people who have had multiple tours of duty with the county for eligibility requirement.
Any more discussion?
And the other thing that we didn't specify, but I think we talked about it, is elected officials are excluded, okay? Now, some people have had tours, I think, where they've been elected and not. I think any experience with the county, even as an elected official, should count. But benefit is not being paid to those current elected officials.
Right.
Okay?
All right, okay.
Does that make sense?
What if they have 15 or 16 years of service before they become an elected official?
So then that will be accommodated for in the anniversary or the bridge start date? Yes.
If they go back to being a.
And I'll just throw out a, you know, Sheriff Bill Martin has had several tours. And although he's not qualified for the longevity bonus, this one-time, well, you know, this new idea, let's say. If in the future, he came back as an hourly employee or a non-elected employee, he would have that third, you know, his elected tour and his unelected tour as hourly employee, that'd all be added up. So he would have about 25 years, that he would have a significant.
That sounds like a caper.
So that's not gonna happen.
I mean, is that how you see it too?
Yes. No, 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 no. That's gonna be accommodated for effective service date.
It's bridge service.
Bridge service date, yeah.
Bridge service.
Well, the bridge service date doesn't really matter because he ain't gonna get the bonus.
He's not gonna get it now, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be populated to where that qualifies him for the longevity pay that's currently paid.
So I'd say he has, he had 20-some years of service before he became sheriff. He's elected official. Then he goes eight years or 10 years as an elected official. Then he goes back after he's chairs and goes back to be an officer. Well, that's a bridge service.
But today.
But today, he is elected official. So, call him favorite. Hi.
Hi.
All opposed. Motion carried. All right, Mr. Meeks. Where's Jeff and Evakken?
Justin.
There he is.
Commissioners, I ask for a change to the agenda. Basically, going for attorney-client privilege is not what I need at this point. I need to go in for confidential data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of a corporation, partnership, trusts, and individual companies, basically. For 20 minutes, I ask that this open session will resume today at 11:20 in this room when we're done. I'd ask that the three commissioners and myself attend that meeting. And we won't be moving from this room to another room for that exact session. Re-convening back in here.
So, there probably is somebody else that needs to be part of this conversation. But I, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure.
I, I. Well, it's.
I think it's the same thing as my topic.
Yeah, I think, I think based off of what happened on Wednesday with the, this is for the medical mall. I think right now, I think it just seems to be the commissioners and myself. And if we deem that we need to come back in and.
Engage someone.
Engage someone else, we will do that, but it's proprietary information from one of the providers.
Okay.
Well, we're gonna reconvene back in this room at 11:21. But we will be leaving this room.
Do I hear a motion? Okay, do I hear a second?
I second that.
Any discussion? All favor. Hi, all opposed.
Mr., do you have the key?
I have the key. What do I do with it? Pretty sure you have them.
Looks like a master container.
What are you making today?
I'm still making pop holders.
Pop holders.
I'll have to make one of my major things.
It's, it has concrete here, it has concrete, it has weight walls. Yeah, they go, and they may name that. And that road's never been closed.
Well, Lynn can't close that road because it's gonna be publicized three times. And he's already said that he's had the survey, and that road's completely on Jeff's. So Jeff doesn't want it closed. He just disagrees. And the county has to continue paying it. It's swayed it.
And of course, he wants done, haven't he?
Well, no, Jeff is asking us for a couple loads of ground and grade it once or twice a year. That's not too much. And Dad, see, Dad was smart enough not to let him close that. I bet you in the 86 area, he didn't close.
See, I hear, so we're cheating.
See, I, I, I don't want to change anything.
Oh, you know what? Since, since you can always see the eyes, I, I would say, uh, the town. So, you always see the side. Yeah, I, the, the, the society, I, I, I came over to where, especially in that kind of a case. Now, another landlord, if they just sold one size to a different, some, somebody else who was different, I feel about it, then maybe there'll be room for discussion, because you got two different... Do you know, I, I'm having, I'm kind of thinking now. Oh, yeah, obviously, if there are people, if you can't get to people safely and efficiently, that, you know, having... Catberry used to be kind of like that, how the light, in that section out there. Well, it sounds like we're going back to that. Yes, yes, we can, out there, yeah. Yep, yep. Well, and even, even ours is, is, is a lot, is two, two, so coming out, like you said, now, so there is an optimal time, you know, close weeks now, a couple of times in the season. Kendall? Excuse me. In order to speak, I mean, I understand, in order to speak, but let's say I want to touch on two or three different topics. Can I just do it all at once, or is it? Okay, okay, all right, thank you.
But I had to tell you the story. See, they got quarry out there. There's a quarry out there that is, uh, that they, on, they called it Shepherd Quarry, and...
Where is that? I don't understand.
You go up one-twenty-fifth.
To Sycamore.
To Sycamore. Sycamore's fifty-four tomahawk. Road to Mayfair. Now, if you're not far enough over.
Well, there's Union Town.
Yeah, it's, it's...
Yeah, I know, maybe it's up here.
This is probably, this is probably one-twenty-fifth.
That's his mormonton.
And that's one-sixty, is he need to come back? It's one-twenty-fifth.
Oh, yeah. Oh, here we go. Here's Redfield, that's how I was trying to...
Yeah, that's...
Dunkles up.
Okay. Come back down, let's see.
Sycamore.
Sycamore.
Oh.
Tomahawk is, let's see.
And Tomahawk is here.
Okay. Sycamore will be about right here.
Oh, this little tiny one?
Yeah, it just goes from here to here. Cat Woolworth right here. Well, right here, see the rock quarry is actually right here.
Okay, that's, that's really, okay, this is, okay. Oh, Shepherd's Quarry. Is it on, on this one? This, this Dever, Dever Shepherd?
Yeah, but anyway, what they, what happens, what happens is they, we've watched this, they, uh, right to, right at the bottom, it comes down a hill here, and they used to have a culvert there. Well, there was a farmer that had cattle up there, just off that, and this culvert developed a hole like this. So, the farmer puts a, one of his buckets that, that feeds cattle, or one of, one of them metal things, and he puts a red rag on it. And he calls his county commissioner, he calls the public works director. So, what was the county's answer? The county come out there and road graved the hole full of gravel, didn't replace it. And so now, for ten years, it's actually been more than that, since that happened, we're in twenty now, they, they, when it rains down through there, the road, all the gravel moves up in the ditch, because you don't have a culvert. And it turns into a quiet water. And my buddy Kevin's not going to complain, he owns a thousand acres up there. And Gageley Woolworth, if you look at that map, you'll find Woolworth's all over there. They may not be, any believe me, it's Ottawa and Louise. They own a ton of land.
Well, this is...
They never play anything.
This map is so old.
It is. Because I'm not even on there.
Yeah.
My folks are. But my whole point is, like I was telling Eric, it says, if you would replace that culvert, you would be going out there, after, after every major rain, they come out there and they have to deal with about two loads of gravel, and redo it. And if they're going to ride the hill, where okay is, they have a big swale that has these two massive culverts in there, and they come in there, they, they put about three or four trucks loads of gravel, and it goes off into the ditch, and worsens it out, and they come back and do it.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's just a waste of money.
Yeah. It, it is interesting, but, but could be done, you know, trying to, I guess, weigh the cost and all of that. Uh, when, when is it more cost-effective to go in there and essentially kind of rebuild the road? Than to keep putting rock on it, you know, I don't...
Well, here, here's what we're telling you.
Yeah, I know.
This is nothing.
Yeah.
If a, a farmer that's never been a roadblock, that's never did road grading or anything else, out in her neck of the woods, where she's from, Doug, Doug's campus, they got township, township's got their own road grader.
Yes.
And this guy, this guy had no experience going, going roads, but he's smarter than like me at how to fix this stuff. Well, number one, they have a, what's known as a free service from the state. It's called a hydraulics. He will tell you how big a culvert, how easy to put, if you want to put a culvert down the ditch, they'll tell you how big it is to do the water loads for free.
Yeah. Have you told Mr. Bailey this?
He probably knows.
Well, that's awesome.
And it's free. It is, it's a free service.
Yeah.
So, he had him come out there, and you're just talking about township.
Yeah.
He come down there and showed him where he wanted to put the culverts and replacement and stuff, and they told him the size. Now, there's nothing saying that he has to put in exactly that size. So, he went a size bigger than what they, and they were happy with that. And you know, we used to call the road out there, our folks farm, the wagon trailer, I mean it, oh, man, now it's almost like a super power. Because the guy actually got a road grader, he gets, he gets this, he put in new culverts.
My dad would be so happy, I'm telling you.
Oh, that's awesome.
Never lived to see it.
Yeah.
He thought that road so...
What I'm telling you, it isn't a rocket science to maintain your route, you've got to have the problem there.
I'm getting the right words out here. And just, just for clarification, I'm adding a sentence to, I'm adding a sentence to you guys' motion. The session will resume today at eleven forty-five. We'll go in for twenty-four minutes back in this, in the, this room. And you will be going to another room for executive session. That has to be part of the motion now.
I amend my motion to...
You freed that language.
Say that.
Yes, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
It's, it's for the same reasons and the same people.
All right. All in favor? All right. All opposed?
I was in favor. Like I said, Tommy Johnson had a forty or forty-five year, county wasn't ready to tire in that movie. He was great, wrote with great rock, great, and what they shouldn't do, I mean, rock is new, they're trained under Tommy Johnson. I guess Eric Bailey down there does a good job, I don't know, but they said he does. Wouldn't you take your movies and have Eric Bailey train them, somebody that's been there thirty years with experience? And the other guy that we had out there, Jimmy Allen, he passed away, he very disease. He's like guys. But them guys, they wrote them, were good.
Well, this is one of the first times I've heard Eric, or heard any talk of, you know, him or somebody taking the guy down and, and, and training them and working around and doing some things, and, and some other guys now are interested in also learning and, and then the plan to, to, you know, get, get on a, on a rotation where every two weeks, we know that all of our, our roads have been graded, you know, and maybe I've missed it in the past, just hearing those things, but, um, so I was, I was pleased to have...
Some people, uh, this guy passed away, and he used to root, grow, uh, road grader, he had no experience with road grader, but he ran some heavy, like, life time. And all his training was, he, he, he went out here to where the farm was, or where it was, they, they had a, the gravel out there, and he, he got out there and he graded back at four, three, four times, and they go, look, there you are.
There has to be something, school, I think.
There, there's got to be some... Well, it was, it was encouraged to hear Jeff say, you know, we got a training manual out here somewhere. Let's find that.
That, that's all I did in the military, was train people.
Yeah.
And I took, and what you did is you cross-trained people, you know. So, what happens, Joe Schmoosch out there, you know?
Yes.
Her family isn't there.
Yes, yes.
And so you have somebody that's knowledgeable to take care of, you know.
Nobody is irreplaceable.
No. Well, I will say this, as an operations sergeant, uh, it's what Carson called, uh, wing sergeant, and a first sergeant, he had been in the schoolhouse environment his entire career, made first sergeant, made it just fifty out there. And he come to me and he said, there's nobody in this company that is so important that can't, the army gives you thirty days vacation a year, and it's very important, but they can't take the thirty days vacation. Shoot, I had saved up like ninety days, they, they'll let you get to a certain mountain, and you need to use it.
Use it, yeah.
And he took his thirty days in company, and this week, and I had put in, and gave plenty of this, and I took my thirty days, and I got back, and the first sergeant come to me and said, Sergeant Mark, you can never get thirty days, can you? I get two weeks, but you will never get thirty days. And I said, well, why don't you do your theory, that nobody's sold for it. I'm only so short of people, I didn't have any time.
Oh, no, there was no...
I could, I could train them all the jobs I had.
Yeah.
And I was...
To keep all those things, balls rolling, you know.
I was, I was middleweight guy, I was a drug addicted alcohol guy, I was a mail clerk guy, I was, uh, the operations, headquarters, two sergeant, publication, I mean, if I got paid, I was over that. And so when I come back, my desk was piled over. And it took me a good week to get to everything. And I wasn't, that wasn't the only job, I know that, uh, when I ran the facility in Bama, it was like two, three thousand students, and I was trying to train my guys, but they, they actually had a guy that did two massive, uh, actual personnel. And I got my, he was the same rank of, and Sergeant Gonzalez, and every time he had a spare moment, because he's a senior, trying to get, get he, next senior line, I mean, to train monthly, I didn't get him all the training. I went, took two weeks of, of leave, and I said, now it's here, I don't, you're going to get suspenses, and if the suspense is due, they got to have a hand strike, you're going to have to do it. I go into suspenses, Monday, every day I get that, I said, you can leave it. And so, I come back, and I, only two weeks later, you come back, and he goes, Sergeant Mark, he says, your desk is like this, and I said, as long as you know suspenses, two weeks after the day that, today, I come back, I'll handle it. And he goes, but did you hear that someone so got in trouble on the toll booth? And I said, Sergeant Gonzalez is already taking care of it. And he goes, how'd you do that? He said, I, he goes, but he goes, I never want your job.
So, in your younger days, it sounds like you would have been pretty well fit for this new position they're talking about.
Let's just say, I, I will say this to you. If you ever had express today, in, I come down, and I'm training, we're training like three hundred British, we have a reserve Italian guy training, we've got regular basic trainees coming through, and we have like three hundred, no, we got four hundred of them coming in on site, plus lieutenants. And to top it off, uh, it was like eleven o'clock or twelve o'clock, I had four retired four-star generals coming in to do a study on gender-integrated training. Now, this is all at once. And I come down, going to head shit, come checking in with them, and I'm met with three TV crews, and, you know, it's never good if you've got a TV crew that you don't know about. Well, I'm living, I mean, I'm getting ready to go out on somebody, and the public fair guy, he's the lady, he comes up to me, goes, Sergeant Mark, he says, I assure you, I gave the paperwork to him, and you should have it. And I said, I have it? And he says, I'll guarantee you, everything's fine, and the, the paperwork, and I knew exactly what happened. I said, listen, we work on other projects, you know, this one, this one, and I said, oh, I need this, and if you wouldn't, it wouldn't be here all the time. So, about ten minutes later, this sergeant, maybe she was a female, she'd never been promoted, and she didn't get promoted because she's black, she just knew how to, because she was worthless, because I followed the job behind her, and I actually had more time in service, but she got preference... Because I followed the job behind her and I actually had more time in service, but she got preference to get promoted because she was one. And because she was wonderful, that happened to me, to get the best of her. So anyway, she brings her sister down to Sergeant Major's man, she had the chaplain, he had made apartments. He gets, Sergeant Mark, you gonna save me with the chaplain, I brought him down? Why she has a Ronnie down there, I don't know, the troops are trained and stuff. And I go, she goes, what's he new to it down here? And I said, well, you know Sergeant Major, if you take your captain's sister and go up there and look under her dress, you'll find that memo that I have authorized it. And I'm absolutely livid out there, I'm always going to have these in here. And she was like, and, and, and chaplain's eyes open. Then I, I turned to her, I said, and you know, Sergeant Major, in about the next ten minutes, I have a congressional delegation, a four-star general, telling me to hurry. You know, she couldn't grab that chaplain's hand fast enough, yanked him back to the vehicle. Because you lose your career or congressional delegation to something to a draw. She didn't want to be anywhere near that with the hospital table.
Oh wow.
So now figure out what this is, this is all going on. All the training and people is all going on at the same time with news. And so I get congressional delegation, settle in their room to do what they need to do. I get everything mellowed out. And at one o'clock in the afternoon, we had double training going on, I had to take it. Because they did it separate before one o'clock. And this was like clockwork. And I had to substitute and be a instructor, because I was busy, a chief instructor, but we're short instructors. I instructed for an hour. And at three o'clock in the afternoon, well, we got rid of one half of the, that made some of the training people left. And the, the news people left, the reserve went to another area. And the Brits moved on to another area. And things mellowed down, my guys actually had a break, because they get a break every fifty minutes. And we're sitting there at three o'clock in the afternoon and everybody is wiping their head going, I didn't think we could pull this off.
Oh wow.
I mean, and I, and that was stress. I mean.
That was good.
A lot of stress.
That was a lot of love on that one.
And they go, they, and they, they complimented me, you know, Sergeant Mark, you didn't even break a sweat off. Well, you made it look easy, I was like, if you knew. You know what the most important thing you do before a company comes calling? You go check the bathroom, all the trains. I went in and I checked to make sure there wasn't any. Because you, you figure you got two or three hundred, I won't hit right.
Just failing females.
Well, they're out there, they get a break every fifty minutes. And I caught them when they were on, uh, back in class. And I went in to make sure that there was plenty of paper towels, nothing on the floor, plenty of soap and soap and culvert paper. And I did, I checked both, uh, moves. And I did that ten minutes before the congressional delegation come in. That, that's the most important thing you can do.
Oh goodness.
Consequently, when I did tour dress and stuff like that, they would actually make comments to me about how good my facility was and, you know, how professional people were.
Awesome, awesome.
I did, and if I trained them, they voted me.
Awesome.
You never, this never happened to you. Come to Christmas, uh, they had what they call Exodus, where fifteenth of December, and basically in the training, they closed down basic training, the kids can go home.
Oh.
And leave, they, you know, for like a week or two, a, a leave, the army advances. And they go home and this is, and whatever, that's a good thing. And I get a phone call on the fifteenth, everybody's gone. He said, Mike, they got, and they go, Sergeant Mark, you got to put on a dog and punish you. And what had happened is they had bombed the subway in Japan, the nerve agent. And then I actually leave. And they go, I go, I don't have enough people to put up a decon line, I don't have enough people. I go, and they have privates that didn't go home that were filling, that hadn't even burned out the monitors, they had it in. And they shipped them over the rim and put it all in protective suits, you know, just like this tote thing.
Yeah.
We were masked, protecting this one tender up the nerve agent. And so I got it all lined up out there and they, they never had an officer. And they sent down a, a major, this captain from the head shed, to answer questions to the press. And I used to smoke a little corn cup pipe. I took it, got everything, everything was set up and it was looking good and everything. I would run around and tie that, the building there, that's not fully correct, smoked out.
Yeah, yeah.
So I went around there to.
And this reporter falls in around here.
And he goes, I, I said, well, the captain and the agent answering questions, he goes, no, Sergeant Mark, I think you set this thing up and you're the expert, who I was. And they go, he goes, I want to interview you. And I was like, oh.
Yeah, yeah.
I did the company line.
Yeah.
They, they got their, I, I come home and said, uh-huh. How, she worked for Mary Bay, she was a manager of Mary Bay. It was like six o'clock or whatever time even the news was and she was there at first. And I said, Eric, turn on the news, turn on the news. And there I was, I got, I got my ten, my ten seconds of fame.
Yeah, glory.
Yeah, it wasn't intentional.
Yeah.
I was on the, uh, ten o'clock, maybe it's ten.
Oh.
Yeah, I got the news tape.
Oh yeah.
And they go, they, they asked me, I got a call from the general. And he told me, he said, Sergeant Mark, you did an outstanding job. And I said, well, I did the party line. But they don't train you for stuff like that. We, we just gotta be able to wing it. I sure wish I had had a couple captains, I was authorized a major two captains. I never. Occasionally give me a captain, just a cage for, I had six months in the wing map. Look what your major two captains are, they're basically your admin guys. You know, they, they do all, they do all the answering on emails and stuff, around the world and stuff. They're, they're, they would think they're supposed to administrate, they're supposed to be a couple of educated chemical people, nuclear and biological people do that. They would do all the answers back worldwide, because we were the second manner experts for the entire world. But unfortunately, I never had one of those.
I don't know either, he was at the city. The city had a planning commission meeting last night and, um, um, well, he was at the planning commission meeting. Now I don't remember if he was at the special meeting, I think he was, I think he was at the special meeting.
I bet he was.
Talking about the, um, or they voted last night on, on their new city commissioner, so, and that was quite a.
How do they, uh?
That was quite an ordeal.
No, but how do they determine who's going to be the mayor? The mayor.
Oh, the mayor, I think the five of them.
Get together, like, like we did here.
Yeah, yeah. Now, they don't, that they didn't talk about. And I, apparently, which I, I was a little confused about reading, that Randy Nichols is the president of the city commission. And then they have a mayor. And I don't know the difference in duties, because it looks to, look to me like last night, the, as, you know, who's acting as president, that he did a lot of the same things that the mayor would do. So, but the differences are, when you have a full commission, I, I don't know.
You just never know, man. And consequently, when people, I got it done that too. And they're retired, on fourth of August, they closed it down. I would work for closure. And anyway, the Department of Justice took, uh, uh, guilty pardon up there. They wanted to hire me and I probably made, would have made eighty grand a year to work. And I would have been on the same job that I was on in the military. But I would have been, would have been a civilian contract, uh, to the Department of Justice. And my buddy AJ, that had worked for me, he got a job up there. In fact, he got it because I did not want to stay. I, I've been on the, I wanted to come back and I, you know, twenty-two years, but I wanted to come back here. But he took the job, my, he was at, he was down there with my daughter down there with Walmart. He goes, hey, Mark, you want a job? And I go, never, when I go to the job, he goes, well, you can, and they, they, he was talking about you, I was like, fifty thousand a year, so the job. I didn't have the heart to tell him that I was offered the position above while he was making.
Oh.
And I didn't, I didn't want it.
Yeah, he probably would not want it.
I didn't, I didn't want to hurt his feelings.
Yeah, yeah. Probably would not.
That one and the one you, well, I was offered, uh, one in Pineville, Arkansas. I was offered one at, at Nellis Air Force Base, what happened, something, Colonel retired. And they get these jobs, they're six-figure jobs then, you know, over a hundred thousand. And then they bring a guy like me and I'd be the steward at AB Valley. And what they were doing in, well, even in Tulokia out there, would, would have took me. In Utah, uh, they were doing away, they were incinerating, uh, getting rid of blister agents. And I bet there was a nerve agent at Pine Bluffs. And right there to Anderson Army Depot, they, uh, my buddy went to work there. And he was probably at eighty thousand dollars a year. Working for Westinghouse and they were incinerating nerve agent. That was pretty big.
I bet they were, yeah, that would be, wow.
But, but you have to have that expertise to do that. And my job, uh, at State, I think it was State of Michigan, uh, Colonel up there, he became their headman guy in the entire State of Michigan. I would have been his right-hand man, so I would have been only the eighty, ninety thousand dollar person a year.
Oh.
And, and he, what, well, I would be doing all the training and he does the technical side, upper side.
Ah, ah, okay.
You know, that, that, that you're, he, he did your executive training.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and I had several colonels call me and ask if he needed a couple of work. He, he was.
I was cleaning out one, uh, I forget who it was now. Cleaned his quarters.
Oh, yeah.
And he tried to get, told me, talking into it.
Yeah, because I don't need, I don't have like twenty years in. And I wanted to get to twenty-two, I didn't want to get that. I was back to work there. But I had a daughter in high school, I wanted to be there all the time.
Yeah. And we wanted to move home to our parents.
Yeah, that was, that was very important. Like, you can always make more money, but you can't replace your parents.
That's right, that's right.
In fact, uh, Ed French had the, uh, he had Will Wallace's job there.
Ooh.
And he was the starter now. And Ed French had come to me and asked me, because he was wanting to leave the job.
Oh, yeah.
And I, I forget the lady, she's passed away now, but she took it over for like a year.
Oh, okay.
But I would ask her, I would.
You were interested?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, they don't pay enough. I mean, having that, uh, that, uh, late, uh, uh.
Yeah.
It's like nine hundred thousand. You know, depends, depends on where you get it.
Yes, yes, it would.
There's a lot of chemical people that, down in the world, they got great jobs because their jobs are. And yes, this country is right down there, Alex, because they are nuclear, biological, chemical, they are very well. They're, they have now, they're predictions, they, they do. But that was, that was interesting. Is, you know, three, three news teams came down there, when they had that big entourage down there, who had set that up. And I didn't know that, was the reserves set this up? And they had a new, uh, tent, this tent, so it didn't take anything, it was a surgical biologic tent. That it just, it was blown up like air. And it was a hospital-like tent. And it had a great big filter that opened out all the good things, rent, fire stuff. And, and they were showing us all the new pieces, putting chemicals in it. And they heated that out, out here on this cage. You've got to figure it's an overpressure system. So the air coming in is filtered or combiner, combiner, you know, bio or chemical. And being the overpressure, you're always having the good air, force the air out. Really, really interesting to see that type of stuff.
For a second?
Yes.
All favor? All right, all opposed? Question carries. Where'd Mr. Mees go, has he got any more, or we're done?
His time's up, isn't it? Oh, he's got five more minutes. You know, his time's up.
Well, I'll see what he has. Well, I got, I want to make kind of, kind of amendment to the, uh, agenda to talk about, uh, department head salaries for the end of the year. I'll make that motion.
You want to make a motion to talk about department head salaries?
Yes.
Yes, add to the agenda.
That was a second?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, I want to clarify that motion you're asking. You're asking to have the agenda amended to discuss, okay, good.
Correct. A discussion, all favor? All right, question carries. Okay, we, uh, we discussed this earlier on, your, uh, department heads, uh, that did not, and also, um, salaries employees, um, about their, their rates for, uh, two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, we have two in corrections and one, uh, in IT.
That we budgeted for.
That we budgeted for, they have been budgeted for. So we need to make a salary resolution. And what, uh, what we had discussed and had discussion was for the two salary employees at the correction facility, uh, that, uh, is ten percent.
Are you paying it out of your pocket?
Yes. Ten percent. And, uh, and for IT, uh, for some odd reason, we missed it before, but he's normally making about fifty-nine thousand, but his actual base salary is fifty-four thousand, two hundred and five, uh, point two oh. And they're raising him to sixty-four thousand, two, five, point two oh.
And then we have the, uh, don't we have an annual contract renewal for assessor that?
That's, that will be discussed now when that contract comes up next year.
So that's the anniversary day of the contract?
Yes, the anniversary day of the contract. So I'd said that, I, I made that, uh, comment that we would discuss these at, uh, in December, before the end of the year. Trying to do a little cleanup work.
Okay.
So what's your thoughts?
Well, I, and he's here as part of that process.
Let me, let me, let me go back a little further. Uh, they were the two, the two individuals, or three individuals that, that were not covered with the last one. Okay?
And it had been brought up.
Yes, it had been brought up a couple times.
So, uh, yeah, both of these.
Yeah, it is before you.
Both of these were brought up as in the budgeting process. So this is not a new, new topic.
We said we would take care of it in December. We said we would take care of it in December.
And, um, you know, I think we've seen where.
No, IT's been budgeted for.
Right, right, right. Uh, and I give a little bit of history on that too, but, um, for some reason, correction staff, it was not intentional.
No.
But.
We missed.
We missed it when we were, uh, addressing, mostly elected officials, but it was salary employees.
Well, and salary, yeah.
It was salary employees, yeah.
Yeah.
And so, it was, it was an oversight.
Yes.
And, and, and I concur, I concur.
Yeah. And they, and, and, and these individuals hadn't had, uh, a raise for another year.
Yeah.
They were not, I don't think they were.
Yeah, one of the most, like I mentioned earlier, surprising things watching the budget process the first time, basically, the salaries were stuff that, that were offline or out, out of bounds for departments to, to make any recommendations. And, and we started bringing those discussions to where we talked about it earlier. And, you know, I think we made, you know, the intention was to, to start with the hourly employees, plug some of their leaking gaps, get the salary the next, uh, up, up to reasonable scale. But in between these two, two events, there was an ambulance that we assumed and some uncertainty. And, and so, it sort of delayed, just like longevity, we've been talking about that for three years too. And budgeted for last year and decided earlier today how we were going to distribute that. With the eye, with the forward view of this might be, we might just change the longevity pay that we have on the books to, uh, more meaningful numbers, uh, instead of peanuts and whatever you described. You know, with respect to IT, um...
We give him a lot more responsibility, a lot more.
I, I would say that had it not been for his assistance, this jail project would have, um...
Been in trouble.
Been difficult, you know, it's like the HVAC, I mean, I...
Ten hours.
You know, we, I, I remember sitting down with him and watching the things and, and basically watching the air, makeup air vent open up and realizing that they're measuring that to control the, you know, so it gets colder and colder, you know, just like backwards, but it was...
Well, he, he actually learned a lot more about ATACs than I do, and he wanted to.
Didn't even ever want to do it. Uh, I think he's also, uh, been on the, you know, basically, uh, repurposing some of this hardened facility for server space, you know, he's, he's taken a, a lot of deliberate steps to get us to where there could be a utility in this building, um...
I know that we've also, along with this, you know, budgeted, we've budgeted for an individual to be, uh...
An assistant.
Assistant person to him for this year, so.
Then the idea of lots of security and taking this building and, and, you know, there's a lot of responsibility, um...
And I expect the job function to increase in the near future. So, I'm looking for a motion. Ten percent on the two salaries.
Ten percent on the two correctional salaries and this, and what is it?
And ten thousand dollars on the IT position.
From the IT position. Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Question carries. Anything else?
Now, do we need to do a resolution and?
We have to do, Kiddles and I have to do salary resolution.
And we sign that now or later?
Yeah. What do you got, Justin? You got another?
I think, I want to just, a couple of clarifying comments. The longevity pay, you guys have actually budgeted another fifty-one thousand for next year, correct?
For, no.
So, this, there was no additional money set aside for longevity next year?
I don't remember, we may have. I can't remember.
I thought, I thought you did.
We may have.
Okay.
I'll look.
The secondary part is if, if you guys do take the hospital and it becomes a medical mall, there's going to be a lot of additional IT work.
Oh, I know there is.
And so, that, I mean, the taxpayers need to know that there's, I think someone said sixty miles of wiring or some crazy number of miles out there of wiring and...
Yeah.
So, there's a functionality out there that's...
Well, we are, he's already out there because we have, have one president on that building, so he's always working in that area.
I think there is money set aside for longevity next year too, and there's a way to maybe tie that in. We did the math once and it ended up being like a hundred and three thousand.
Yeah.
And we, we talked a lot about, for Clifton's knowledge, we talked a lot about, do you want to make your wages competitive on the front end to get to hire additional staff or make it towards longevity? I mean, there's a really interesting balancing there because we were so bad on the front end too. You know, we, our starting salary was low compared to the rest of the area too, so...
Well, that's one of the reasons we're having trouble with the law terminal.
Yeah, we're getting, you know, fourteen and fifteen dollars an hour is pretty, in some areas, it's getting, becoming pretty common.
Yep.
Or not even close.
Well...
And there's other things that, that we can do to make us a more attractive employer. One of them is like interlocal with Fort Scott Community College. Defining what, uh, what skills, knowledge, skills and abilities that we need for these high turnover roles and then complement a, uh, an onboarding type program with education to where these younger people feel like they're getting the command on their profession. Uh, I'm thinking a criminal justice class or, you know, um... And, and, and you become a, a training organization. Now, some of these, some of these people are going to go and work for services that can pay, pay better, but you'll have some, enough of them that want to stay here and, and be outstanding professionals and contributors in this community.
I think Clifton's obviously well, well aware of this, but the, the labor market in rural America is becoming tighter and tighter because of the lack of just warm bodies.
Sure.
And so, we got a problem, we got to think about even five years from now, because Commissioner Fisher talked about this, we've got, you know, part of our staff is getting really close to retiring and it's a big chunk too, it's that baby boomer group.
Well, the county is getting across the crossroads with labor, with multiple things.
Right.
And we can either choose to be aggressive or we can choose to really date away.
Right. Well, and, and thinking outside of the box is something this commission has done really well. I mean, it's, it's been mentioned on multiple occasions that it's hard to do that because it ruffles feathers, but...
I remember as a kindergarten, maybe first grade student in Fulton, Kansas, walking from school to grocery store is kind of a field trip. And I think there were two grocery stores that we got to pick from. That's how many our county currently has now.
Yeah.
What Fulton had, I don't know, forty-five years ago.
Oh, it's shocking.
I mean, we're not using...
Yeah, Clifton, if you want to move your mic, they're, they're actually, they have a hard time hearing you, if you don't mind moving one of the mics.
I mean, our county's not unique. Every other county in the state of Kansas or across the nation is going, feeling the same problems we are. And, you know, I'm, I'm assuming this future commission, trying, I can make a lot of friends.
As Commissioner O'Hare says, he doesn't have any.
I had a case on, I had a road issue report, it was hot on the trail.
Uh-huh. No, but I think the, I think the out of the box thinking that Commissioner Fisher is talking about, I mean, the longevity pay was a, another one of our really interesting banters and it went on for a couple of commission meetings because, you know, the front end pay on, on the county is not, it's up to two thousand and fifteen.
Well, yeah, like, like you say, the, you know, starting salaries around here now are typical.
And I think, I think everyone, everyone on this commission, prior commissions, you know, the years I've been here, has taken the tax dollars to heart. And we know that every dollar that we spend, you know, we don't have a utility, every dollar that we spend is, is tax dollars. And so, anytime you give someone a raise, it's somebody's, somebody's tax dollars and we get that. But there's also a point of, you know, being able to manage what we have and, and fill in the functions that we have. And going from potholes to healthcare is a huge leap.
Well...
You know, and so, we got some things that...
From the pothole, to healthcare, to interlocal agreements, you know, the list goes on and on.
Right.
And, and from my experience over the years, it is, is a lot of things that, that weren't done, that, that we just assumed. And then they come back and we had to take care of them. You know, there's a few items that they hope to find the roads.
Well, government, whether it's local, state or federal, awful get it, pushing stuff down the road and let somebody else manage the problems. At some point, we have to decide, are we going to fix that problem or not? Or are we going to push it ten years down the road?
Well, a great example is our ditches. Oh, my gosh, how many years has it been since we really had a serious effort on that? It takes months. It takes resource.
Well, as county counselor, my, my concern is more bridges than ditches.
Well, true, bridges and ditches.
Right.
I was just saying that as a good example.
Right. I know, but I'm saying like that, let's see, probably really what you're building on is...
The one on bridges is being pushed off and pushed off and pushed off.
Well, we have a guardrail down on old sixty-nine highway that they've been, you know, waiting to get fixed. It's just an issue of money, but to me, there's a foreseeable issue.
Karafi just north of me.
Right.
That's been three years, it's had a hole in the middle, middle of it.
Right. But going back to what we're, our agenda item is pay, you know, just using an IT director's job, the baseline payment for an IT director is well, we're paying well below, even with the new raise that we just gave, is well below, well, well below the, the state average, well below the regional average. I mean, even in our community itself, for an IT director, it's getting, our IT director's getting way less than what they pay in the private and public sector.
Well, I'd say we're getting, we, we're getting a pretty good deal.
Right. But that's, but we also understand it's tax dollars, we get that.
Oh, yeah, somebody else's money.
Right. So, it's, it's, this has been, you know, longevity pay, competitive pay, it's all a struggle because we know where, where the money's coming from. And hopefully, someday down the road, maybe that'll change. Because without growth, like Clifton said, if you're not doing something, you're, you might as well, you're fading away.
You're either flourishing or languishing.
Right.
Right.
And there's really not such a thing as status quo.
Well, and, and languishing, languishing is comfortable. I mean, it is comfortable, I mean...
It costs less.
It costs less.
Well, in the short term, but it, it would certainly cost our taxpayers a lot more in the long term.
Well, if you want the same standard of living.
Yeah.
Right.
If you want that road fixed, it's going to cost in the long term if we do nothing.
Right.
It's nice to have a little industry in our county.
Yeah.
We got to make, we, we need to make those people that are here as happy as we can. That's, I mean, that to me is what government is for, is to make sure we can provide the infrastructure, just like when you pave the, you know, industrial park. I mean, I know there was other roads that needed it, but we need to make sure that our industry that are here has ea- easy access to the highway. I mean, that's just one example, many that you guys have struggled with for the last four years. I know Clifton came on, but...
The rationality behind that was traffic counts. They had around a hundred cars a day.
Right.
So, you have, uh, it makes little sense that to improve the road that sees thirty cars a day like the one in my neighborhood.
But that's going to Mr. Walker's, this morning's talk was, is that, you know, he, he hit the nail on the head, you know, you go, you drive rural Bourbon County and you see houses that you knew once were wonderful homesteads with, you know, seven or eight kids and they went to the Fulton High School and, you know, the graduating classes of Fulton were twenty-eight or thirty and two grocery stores and a movie theater and restaurants and that's all changed literally in one generation. Because one, you know, Commissioner Fisher, my dad, they, they went there and it was a thriving town.
But the generation before then, you know, they had railroad stocks and stuff like that.
Right.
Fort Scott had it where you could hop on the train and get there.
Right, well, Fulton, I mean, they, yeah.
You know.
Well, we actually used the Fulton Gym the other night.
Oh, but that's, was so cool. It's so, it's so like Hoosiers. I love that gym. The basketball hitting the floor is just awesome.
Yeah, we played Fulton, we played fresh Kyle.
But I'm saying, I guess what, the reason I'm up here is talking about wages, when people hear the ten percent raise, it sounds like a lot. But when you look at the actual number, what they're being paid and what their base salary was, we're so far below.
Oh, we are.
Those two, those two administrators were actually below the two thousand and fifteen rate because they hadn't gotten a raise in literally eight or nine years.
Right.
So, it sounds like we're getting a three percent raise every year. Literally, it's going in cycles like waves, every four years here, every five years here.
And I think that's what Bobby's point was, you know. To get this longevity or are you going to hold it against us from?
Can't, because we're so far behind. I mean, that's the problem, is like, we talked about this a couple of years, when you first came on, we talked about that longevity and I was talking to the front end and we were talking to the back end and, I mean, we're, we're darned if we do, darned if we don't.
We've been talking about it for six years.
And, and this may not be the right time to, to talk about this, but we can talk about longevity, but do we, do these departments have any kind of performance?
No.
No.
Type of structure?
No.
And, and I think, I, I think as a commissioner, I would like to see that. I think, I mean, my opinion is you reward those that are doing a good job. I mean, if you're not doing a good job...
I absolutely agree, but performance based, performance based pay is very difficult to administer.
I'm not asking for performance based pay.
Right.
Just asking, are, are, do we have any kind of...
Actually...
Somebody looking at it and saying, you know what, you did a good job this year.
Right.
Right, have you, whatever.
Right.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying perform, I know performance based pay is pretty tough to do.
Right. I think longevity, I think longevity actually solves that problem because if you're developed, if your person's doing their job, they're saying X, Y, and Z employee is doing such a great job that they get to keep their job and they're here another year. So, I think longevity pay does kind of take care of that. Because if you're, an elected official or a department head isn't going to keep that person if they're not doing their job.
So, I, I'm, I'm, from your world and my world, performance, uh, performance and goal setting was a very key to identifying...
I'm evaluated twice a year in my current position.
So, so identifying what the organization is going to look like in five years. And, and so, basically, there, we had enough...
We have no administration.
Information on people.
Right.
That was driven from a supervisor, you know, where this kid wanted to go, what he wanted to do, what were his roadblocks of getting there? And, and we were able then to say, well, he needs, he needs a course in this, or he needs exposure to these kinds of people. So, it was, it was a way to articulate motive, self-motivation if you will. How can I get to the next level, do this, this and this and, and?
I did a performance evaluation, uh, the largest one that I had to do probably for five years was, I did thirty of them a year.
And they take time.
They take time.
And that, and that really is...
You don't get to do it just by like that.
At the end of the day, we need to be a county that people want to live in and we need to be a organization that people want to work for.
And, and I absolutely agree with that.
Now, I will say that it's, there's only three of us up here, that takes the whole county to, to buy into that.
Well, the practicality of what, yeah.
And, and that's a, that's a very idealistic thing for me to say.
Right. Because living in it, like the last seven years and being involved in the, the part where you want things to progress, we have lots of problems, you know, within our organization, we can't, there's no way to work your way up because there's no money to go to the next level. We don't have the levels that are in place.
We don't have a progressive landscape.
We hire it, we hire it, we hire it X because X is all we can afford. We can't give X that person a Y raise after three years because we don't have the money to give the, I mean, there's so many, you know, so many problems.
But, but, I mean, it's not going to happen in a year's time.
Right.
I'm talking a twenty, thirty-year...
Right.
Thing that, that people have to, you know, we're, we're going to have to keep the roads good, you know, and those types of things. But we also need a direction as a county and we need, we need buy-in from the people that are...
Right. Well, the ba- the baseline, the baseline is interesting because you have a baseline of foreseeability and you have a baseline of what you have to take care of. So, eleven hundred miles of gravel roads, do you really have to take care of all eleven hundred miles? You know, you know, that pothole is going to have to get fixed because it's foreseeable that someone could hit that pothole and, and end up hurting themselves or someone else. I mean, there's, there's a baseline of what government is responsible for. And that, what's scary is, is that cost of that baseline, in my opinion, keeps going[1770.02] I mean, there's, there's a baseline of what government is responsible for, and that, what's scary is, is that cost of that baseline, in my opinion, keeps going up.
It does.
And, and in my opinion, we can't keep raising taxes.
Absolutely, there's no way, no one's gonna live here.
So, so.
To pay for it.
I think I, if I could maybe summarize, it would be nice if, outside of the budget, which leaves about second half of the year, but it'd be nice in the first half of the year if the organization could come together and work on a mission, vision, purpose statement. You know, uh, and, and I know these things are, it's, it's slow, it's laborious, um, but a way to get that buy-in, well, how are we gonna make these goals? You know, the, the budget is one part of it, but, you know, how, what are we, what are we gonna do as an organization to get closer to like where we wanna be in five years, two years, this next year?
And we talked about community forums, you know, and actually going out in the community and saying, what does it look like in five years, but things just kept dropping on us, you know, like, really, for me, the, the, what does healthcare look like in five years in rural America?
It wasn't on our radar till three years ago.
Two years, and now, and now, we literally, some of us in our organization are living it every day, what does it look like, how do we, you know, and we don't, and the problem is, is with COVID nineteen, we had a kind of an idea what it looked like, we're kind of moving forward to that end goal, and now it's changed completely since March. So we actually started all over again, like literally sixty days ago, because the healthcare industry is on the ropes.
They are. Well, and there's, Justin brought up a good comment, goes about as far as, well, what do we need to, to further this process along? And with a person that was an intermediary to be a catch-all, a quasi HR director or management type person to coordinate with all the department heads would be, would be a great step, because we'd have a contact person that would be responsible for all this information and making sure things don't fall to the cracks.
And I understand, I understand what, as a taxpayer, what that would make me feel uncomfortable, but the process is having a hard time moving forward without someone to help with that, because you guys, you guys can't, you guys can't work, you guys can't work thirty, thirty-five, I mean, Commissioner O'Hare, you can't do it anymore.
No, I'm burning.
I, I think that. And of course, I, I kinda like, I like numbers, but my assumption would be that act, that person would actually pay for themselves in six months.
Well, I think when you, you look at our ambulance service and, and, yes, how, how we're doing it now, you know.
We could pay.
There's money that we're paying to have someone do the.
A lot.
Billing side of that.
We, we could pay somebody a pretty good salary and actually save the county money.
I agree with that completely.
But as a taxpayer, and I'm a taxpayer, I own a house, I own land, my family owns quite a bit acres, we pay a lot of taxes, but as a taxpayer, I'd rather, I mean, I, I, they have to spend a little money, but I'm, I, I would assume that position would actually save the county.
So, so.
They would pay them, pay for themselves in six months.
So when, when this ambulance issue came up, basically, we looked at a couple of different counties, Lynn County hires it done, they write a check to EMR, and what we learned there is.
It's a big check.
Yeah, yeah.
But what we learned there is, is that like ambulance shows up, you're, you're gonna go for a ride, it's not like, I'm feeling better, I have my wife taking me, it, it just doesn't work that way. Scoop and dump, one of the words that we heard.
And really, one of the things.
Then we looked at, at Allen County, and, and they have a model, just, we follow their, their pattern really.
The Allen, Allen County, the only thing they do differently is they've hired that person that's come in and helped them.
And, and it's an insurance builder reconciler and, and pays client service person.
Right, kind of a catch-all.
Well, like I, like I said before, if we had the right person right off the bat, they're gonna save us twenty grand a year. The other person is, if we moved to a direction now of their partnership with FICO, well, in about three years, that's gonna save us a lot of money.
Yeah.
Well, and really, just you talked about the twenty right off the bat, you have another eleven thousand that would be saved right off the bat too, because of that person that was doing the Omni stuff, would, that could be tied into that person's salary too.
So, you know, we're up to thirty, thirty-seven thousand right there, and then there's a lot of other stuff that will come into play once we, we take a, go through this process and make a decision to, to do this, we can actually identify areas where we're gonna save money.
And then they end up, if, and if you really, if you wanted to get, I'm not saying, but, I mean, Omni's been awesome, but it's not been cheap. So there's, there's money, and, and Allen County's made the decision to not use, you know, that billing service, and they've taken it in-house. We don't have, we don't have no way we can do that now.
But I would suggest that there's talent that has done this for, for Mercy Hospital Systems Insurance Billing.
Right.
It, it's really managing this, these, a finite number of cost codes and.
Or even, even keeping Omni and having someone to be able to go like this to manage the, to connect, I mean, there's no bridge, there's no person to bridge some departments right now.
Yeah.
And to me, that's where the, the cracks.
And we, we, when we, when a customer does have a, a service complaint.
We have no first person contact point.
It's, it's, you, you will fill the call and you'll go try to find the information.
Well, yeah, then, then what happens is, is that, and this is a really good example of how it happens internally, it falls on one of the directors, and then that person who's got another job function, they're all helpful, they wanna help, because we know it's a taxpayer, they step back, go down that rabbit hole, and that rabbit hole sometimes ends up being a month's worth of work to solve a, a problem that no one, and then, then what happens is you can't really give the answer because you don't have authority to.
Well, I know, it's a little bit of a thing, it's also, we have a ten ninety-nine person right now working on the Omni billing.
Right.
That person, uh, once, once they're done, if we have another person to take it over, that's gonna be a cost thing.
Right.
There really is.
Yep.
And we'll, we'll know that, that when we get bills, they're gonna be processed, or when we get statements, they're gonna be processed, before we get to, the money is gonna be processed.
Well, and once again, and just, just another example, consolidating accounts receivable and accounts payable with, with offshoots of different depart, you know, like landfill's a really good example. We've talked a lot about the landfill over the last six years, we know it's a service, we know it's like a golf course, or, we never really had a real picture. We tried, but we, it's a matter of someone sitting down and actually knowing the ins and outs, and Eric would love to have that help, I know he would.
And there you go, you know, that's a prime example.
Right.
We're having to train someone on that system now, that, that should have had that knowledge when we first put that system in.
Or even like another example would be paving, you know, having someone to go out and be a purchasing, have the power to purchase. I mean, Eric's got a time on task getting, you know, gravel and chips, and he's got other things that we could have someone out there, you know, surfing the, the market for cheaper oil or, you know, talking about salt or, and doing that for multiple agencies, not just Bourbon County, but maybe the municipalities, or, I mean, there's just all this tie in that we just, we're missing because we don't have the time on task person. I don't know what organization I learned this from, but we, we run out of bandwidth.
Okay, here you go, you talk about bandwidth, I was one of the first people to, to introduce dial-up internet in Kansas. We ran out of bandwidth real quick.
Showing your age, Commissioner, showing your age. AOL, AOL was a long time ago. So, I really appreciate, I really appreciate the banter today, and thank you for letting me talk about Omni the way I did, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Justin. Anything else, John?
Make a motion to adjourn.
And it sounds good to me, go ahead, second. Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
All aye, all opposed? Motion carries. See you gentlemen next week. Five minutes? Five minutes?
That's called, that's called mask on your face, what?
What?
Potato tree is orange, what?
I can do that.
I'm today. I'm good, today especially.
That's the only reason why I don't call you back, because I don't wanna.
No, I just, uh, want, just wanted to advance the discussion.
Right. But Lynn actually came to my office on Sunday and we ended up talking for almost two hours.
Yeah, my wife said, uh, we gotta talk some guests about enough for two hours.